Let's take a live look right now over Ann Arbor for you here on this Tuesday morning. The city is taking honors in several new rankings, saying that it is one of the best cities in which to live.
It's a high honor for the city of Ann Arbor being named most educated in America.
Good evening, folks. I'm gonna get us going to order here at this working session.
I heard you and didn't acknowledge you earlier. Thank you.
Great. Brenna, forgive me. Would you go ahead with the roll, please?
Commissioner Beaman.
Present.
Commissioner Hodge.
Here.
Commissioner LaBar. Commissioner Light. Commissioner Machewski.
Here.
Commissioner Robbie. Commissioner Sanders.
Present.
Commissioner Scott. Commissioner Somerville.
Thank you. Move now to a public participation. This is your opportunity at working session to provide public comment. Here you have up to one minute at the meeting directly preceding this one, or excuse me, directly following this one, you'll have three minutes. Is there anyone in person who wishes to give public comment at this time? Okay. Ashley, I go to you to see if there's anyone on the internet.
Yes, Chair. First, we have Connie Latimer.
Hello.
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 Yeah, just making sure you can hear me.
Connie, you have one minute. You'd be kind enough, please, to tell us the municipality within which you reside.
Yes, I reside in the Washtenaw area in West Willow. And I'm working with the Healthy Together program, and we've been providing services for seniors for the past three years. And I'm calling to see if there's a difference in January for the RFP. And also, I understand that a director has been hired for the Aging Department to disperse the funds, 11.5 million. I'm wondering on the status of that as well. And lastly, wondering if there's a program for organizations such as ours, where we're not a center, but we've been providing services as if we were a center in this village. Thank you.
Thank you. We do not have a commissioner follow-up session at working session. We do at the full board meeting. Ashley, anyone else online?
No, Chair.
Move then to item three, report from the county administrator.
Good evening, Chair. Commissioners, no report this evening.
Go back to the BOC liaison for any report.
No report tonight, Chair.
Great. We have three items tonight. I apologize for the cramped schedule here, but we are coming to the end of the year and trying to get a hold of several things. Our first presentation, which should be, per my ask, relatively succinct, though I don't want to be discourteous, is from the Empowerment Plan Coat Demonstration Project. Lauren, if you want to step forward and introduce your colleagues and give us your presentation, and then we'll save any questions on this one until the end, just to allow you to get through it.
Hi, I'm Veronica Scott, and with me from Empowerment Plan, I have Lauren Nill to do the coat demonstration, and our amazing board chair, Steve Hamp. And just to give a little bit of background on the organization, Empowerment Plan is a nonprofit based in southeast Michigan that employs individuals from shelters across the city of Detroit, and employs them to manufacture coats that turn into sleeping bags. And while they're working with us, they're spending about 60% of their paid working time manufacturing the coats. But the other rest of that 40% of paid time is dedicated to wraparound services. So we bring things like GED, financial health and wellness, coaching, mental health support, all of those things onsite during paid time. So while you're supporting the work that we do with our amazing sleeping bag coats, hopefully, we're looking at an amazing partnership there. But I think for us, it's also giving back to individuals coming from homelessness and rebuilding their lives. So happy to pass it off to Lauren to do a little coat demo.
Hi, good evening. We have the pleasure of working with several different organizations in Washtenaw County who help distribute our coat to those who are unsheltered in your community. Our coat is made of a 600 durner quarter of fabric. It is weather-treated, so water beads up and rolls right off. We only use heavy-duty buckles and Velcro because zippers break and buttons fall off, and this is designed to be used for several seasons. As you unfold it, you can see right now it's an over-the-shoulder bag. It will unroll into a parka. It is a one-size-fits-most, so I say comfortably a woman's medium to a men's 2X. We have very deep pockets, so people can put their personal items inside. Every coat comes with a pair of Bamba socks, as well as a sanitary wipe. If there are any extra resources, we might have hats, scarves, we also include those. When you open up the coat, you can first see the part, the hood, is not like a typical parka. It's very fitted. That's on purpose to act as both a hat and a scarf. Inside of our coat is what we call the footbag. So you can wear this as a regular coat, but the footbag folds down and it becomes a sleeping bag. We have Velcro around the edges, so it can seal up, and you can pull the sleeves back inside to act as a pillow if you need it. That also helps keep any breezes from coming through, keeping people warm and dry when the weather is inclement. The footbag also detaches. There's a handle on the inside. It can be used to carry personal items. You can also put your personal items in, attach it back to the bag, and roll it back up. So that way, personal items can be kept with you, and when it's not in use, it's an over-the-shoulder bag. This means when there are sweeps, when people are in transition, that they can keep more personal items with them than typical. We work with the Shelter Association of Washtenaw County, typically giving them 100, though they have said they could use up to 200. We work with Wolverine Street Medicine, who works in Ann Arbor and in Ypsilanti, as well as Detroit. They are med students who are giving medical care to those who are unsheltered. SOS, Community Services in Ypsilanti, also receives coats, as well as the Washtenaw County PATH program. So overall, the Washtenaw County groups we work with could use up to 500 annually to help serve those that they work with. Yeah, any question?
One, thank you for the presentation, and two, fantastic job on the expedited nature of it. No, mission accomplished. Let's open it up for any questions that we have on the presentation here. Commissioner Hodge.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation and the demonstration. And I noticed, too, that the advertising opens up the same way as, that is good advertising. Yeah. Is there, I appreciate seeing this and knowing that it's already present in the county, what are you looking for from us?
These organizations are all nonprofits, and so funding, as we know right now for nonprofits, is very limited and it's shrinking. They need these, they expect these, they count on these to provide resources to their community. We're looking for funding to help get these out to organizations and individuals in your community. Oakland County has done a similar initiative, funding these coats for their organizations, as has Wayne County.
Is there like a rough number of coats you're hoping to?
500 is the ask that we have gone to our partners and accumulated from PATH, SOS, SOC, and Wolverine Street Medicine.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Say it again, $150 per coat?
Yes.
500 coats, $150 is $75,000. All right, thank you.
No.
No, no.
I think you had it right the first time.
Let me go to Commissioner Scott here. $75,000, great. Administrator Dill.
Lauren, I just wanted to say thank you for being here. As you know, I'm familiar with your product through the nonprofit that I'm a part of in Detroit, Michigan. Just thank you so much for what you do. We have supported this initiative and those coats in southeastern Michigan, and you guys are just fantastic.
Thank you so much.
Any other commissioner questions for presenters here tonight? Commissioner Scott?
Who's here on their honeymoon? Yeah, thank you. I just want to say congratulations, and thank you for coming back to present to us a three-minute presentation. But congratulations. Wish you the best of luck.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Commissioner Sanders.
Just wondering, I don't even know if I can pose this question to you. Probably should be the people that actually give the coats away. What is the criteria? So I go to one of these four agencies or another agency, automatically get a coat?
Yeah, so we rely on the expertise of our partner organizations who know their community and know their clients as to who might be most in need, especially if the coats are limited that they receive. They know, usually their social workers, their street care team know who needs those coats. We personally don't put any limitations. We say if you're in need, and that could mean many things. Perhaps you're in your car, perhaps you're in a house with no heat. There still could be need just outside of somebody who's traditionally unsheltered.
So since it's a bi-functional, I don't know, piece of equipment, we'll call it, what if I am being sheltered? Am I still eligible? See, that's why I know these questions are not for you. Would this person still be eligible to get a coat?
They could be, again.
Though they are sheltered.
Yes. They could be sheltered, but there's lots of situations where maybe you're sheltered only for the night, and you're outside during the day, and we know January, February can be very cold, and this can keep you warm. Somebody who maybe is disabled and is in a wheelchair can still use this while they're outside. There are multiple situations, or maybe you're just in a temporary shelter for the winter, or a warming center that closes at the end of March, and then it's still cold through the summer, and you need a sleeping mat or a sleeping bag through the summer. And we, through our own outreach, have seen demonstrably that these are kept season over season. Thank you.
One quick question. Do you make child size?
Not at this time, though we have piloted different sizes. The capacity we have for manufacturing right now and the request is at the standard one-size-fits-most, though that is always an option as we move forward for other products.
Any other questions for our guests? Steve, you can just please go to the mic there.
We distribute these coats all over the country. Almost every single state gets them. The most actually go to California, who have the largest number of homeless individuals. We are on the verge of manufacturing our 100,000th coat, which will be done very soon.
This winter.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for sharing with us. We really appreciate your time tonight, and enjoy the rest of your honeymoon.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks so much. Appreciate it.
Appreciate your time.
Move now to item B under discussion items. We're fortunate to have Eileen Spring, our food gatherer, is president and CEO here with us to give us a supplemental nutrition assistance SNAP impacts update. Eileen, thank you for carving time out of your day to give us Eileen, thank you for carving time out of your day to give us the update, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. So I'm going to read for my notes because I have a lot to cram in in a short time, so thank you. So we've all endured the Great Recession, government shutdowns, and the pandemic. And as difficult as all those moments were, SNAP benefits were never discontinued. Looking at September 25 stats alone, there were nearly 29,000 individuals, or about 8% of the county population, were receiving SNAP benefits. The average benefit was just over $189 a month. SNAP benefits are spent at local retailers and farmers markets, which accounted for more than $5.4 million in September alone. So beyond the individual impact, there's an impact to our local economy. The charitable network that Food Gatherers represents cannot scale up ever to replace SNAP benefits. But we are working really hard to mitigate the loss of them as best we can for the month of November. Food Gatherers has increased the amount of food we are purchasing and sending to our partners. Many of our partners have added additional operating hours. All of them are seeing dramatic increases in calls and visits. For example, just using Food Gatherers' website alone, the last two weeks our main page has had 9,000 views compared to 2,000 the prior week. The last two weeks our Fine Food page had 4,500 views compared to 1,000 the prior two weeks. It actually crashed twice, but we've, I hope, fixed that for going forward. We've added four drive-through distributions at Briarwood Mall to complicate our existing distributions at our partner agencies and take some pressure off of them. The first drive-through is this coming Saturday from 9:30 to 11:30. On the same Saturday, there are four regular food distributions happening in Ypsilanti and one in Mylan, where the majority of federal workers in our county reside. We are planning to have a food, have food for up to 400 households at the drive-through. We'll be providing a shelf-stable box of pantry items, fresh milk, cereal, and produce. Thanks to commissioners and county staff for helping get the word out. Special shout out to Brady, I don't know where he is, oh, there he is, hi Brady, for quickly helping us secure the Briarwood location, and to Jared Jackson and his team for providing the MSSI vehicle for added support. There's still no clarity on when and how SNAP benefits will be reestablished and at what amount. Currently, Food Gatherers' food sourcing from the USDA, although it was significantly cut in March, is still flowing. But the longer the government shutdown continues, the source of food will also be at risk come the end of December. Even if SNAP is put whole again, there will be an ongoing need for increased support for the charitable food system. It is sobering to note that in our county, we estimate that 45% of our food insecure neighbors do not currently qualify for SNAP benefits. So I will just pause there because I wanted to give you some time. I know I don't have a long time on the agenda, but wanted to hear any questions that you may have.
Open. Commissioner Somerville?
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to thank you for all the work that you and your team are doing. You guys are heroes. Thank you.
Thank you. We really couldn't do it without a huge network of partnerships. And in that regard, we are well situated to respond to this crisis because of our network of partner agencies throughout the county. But this is beyond the scope of really what this charitable system can do for long.
Let's go back to Commissioner Somerville, then Mashieski, Scott.
The other thing I'll add to that is that although the state of Michigan put really an unfortunately small amount of money into the entire statewide food bank system, if you divide that up between the population across 83 counties, it's almost nothing. And they're encouraging people to go to our local food banks without putting any extra money in the state budget to help support your operations. And I just want to highlight the fact that you are making the most out of nothing when the government, who should really be stepping in at the higher, like higher level than Washtenaw County, is encouraging people to go to you all without giving you any additional support. So wanted to elevate that.
Yeah, I do want to clarify. So there's 4.5 million that's released really for a two-week period, November 1 through the 15th. And they are targeting the areas with the highest SNAP enrollment and the most residents who are federal workers. And Washtenaw County is not one of those places. So we're getting about $125,000 that we'll be using for food purchasing, and we do appreciate it. And it's really sobering, honestly, that because this is happening everywhere all at the same time, there are many communities that will be, as hard as this is here, that are really going to suffer because they don't have a charitable network or a vibrant food economy to help respond.
Yeah, well, I appreciate you all again, and wish that the state of Michigan was doing more. So thank you.
Thank you.
Go to Commissioner Mashieski.
Thank you, Chair. Eileen, I just wanted to make sure you were aware that MDHHS has put some funding into the Aging Network, and that Ageways does have some gift cards for food purchases for older adults.
That's great.
So I think it might, might be good if you could reach out to Ageways and let them know that you could potentially partner with them to distribute those, those gift cards for, I believe they're going to go to grocery stores. It's just one small resource, but I know that area agencies on aging are looking for ways to get those out to older adults who are on the SNAP program.
Yeah, I will try to follow up about that. Thank you. I mean, this system that we're part of is really putting a lot of burden on people who are stressed out and anxious to have to drive, right, to the distribution or to multiple pantries. And that's the beauty of SNAP, right, is that it offers people the choice to go to a grocery store when they need it to buy what they need as opposed to getting an emergency box of food.
Thank you for being here.
Go to Commissioner Scott, then Sanders.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks, Eileen. We talk, have the same sleeplessness thinking about this. I feel like you might have like more because it's like your whole world. I have multiple things to do at night. I appreciate Commissioner Mashieski talking about the gift cards. I've talked to Commissioner Somerville about it, too, and I know that that's a plan of ours to talk, hopefully in the next couple of weeks as this continues to go on, or even shoring up the backlog and what we can do about, thinking about how we could distribute the gift cards to people. So I'm looking forward to trying to get that, trying to get that scheduled and trying to think about ways to do that, to make sure that we're getting people what they need. One of the things we talked about was like Kroger cards, but what do you do with people who are experiencing rural poverty in someplace like Commissioner Beaman's district where there's no Kroger? Right? So we'll have to think really holistically about this and making sure that we're able to reach like all the people who might need these benefits and might need this food and the various ways we can get them that food. So I just wanted to tell you, I appreciate working with a partner like you, who is thoughtful, who is thinking about equity, who is thinking about how we reach all people, and is really thoughtful about the work and is deliberative. And I think that's fantastic. And this is a real example of like now why we lean on people like you who have the expertise of doing this and doing this so well for years. And now in an emergency situation, that experience is really extra important. So thank you so much for the work and bringing your expertise to the table here with us to try to help us figure out what to do, too. So thank you.
Thank you, and it's really my staff who do all the hard stuff.
Go to Commissioner Sanders.
So you know I'm going to say thank you so much for using the MSSI. I knew that was coming.
Yeah.
But also to the staff for the MSSI. And I'm going to give a shout out to our driver, because if she did not come to work, we would not be able to utilize that vehicle. And I don't know that she's ever missed a time to be able to service the county. So I'll give a shout out to Victoria. I do also want to say that when I designed the MSSI, it was designed in mind with emergencies, but not thinking about something like this, where we've got people purposely trying to starve folks. But I also wanted to ask you if, I know you don't have the capacity, so I'm not going to ask you if you've made any attempts. I know you don't have the capacity. But I would like to know whether or not you've had any inreach from your non-traditional or your never supportive other entities, other corporations or businesses here in the county that know that there is a need. Maybe they've never supported Food Gatherers before, but are you receiving any additional? And I know a lot of people assume that the taxpayer dollars covers everything. It does not. We know it doesn't. So I'm wondering if you're receiving any types of additional support from others.
Yeah, thank you for that question. So we call them Need Food Calls that are direct calls to us. They've also increased dramatically, and they're split 50-50 with people who need food and people helping, wanting to give us more resources, financial resources. So we do feel like our local community is stepping up. This is a time of year where our charitable work usually starts really in November and December, and people really have stepped up. I think we have doubled the number of food drives happening than we did last year. And part of our challenge is, as we say, managing the good, is that it's, it's sort of hard work to, to, to manage hundreds of food drives at the time, same time that we're trying to get a lot of food out to people. And so we're just asking for folks' patience, and that we have to prioritize the calls and needs from our partner who we rely on to distribute more than 10 million pounds of food, as well as, you know, taking the individual calls for people who need special assistance.
I hope not to, to burden you more, but I was having a conversation with a banker the other day who was expressing that they had provided some support to a customer that didn't have gas to get home. I was specifically asking him whether or not he had concerns about safety in the banking industry related to this crisis that we're having. And so I have asked and received printouts of the information about where to access additional food. It's not my fault if they inundate you, but.
Oh, that's great. I mean, that's what we're designing for.
That you just don't think about. People have relationships with their financial, you know, bankers and things like that, and they also see the stress as well. So I'm going to try and get those distributed to as many places as we can.
And really, our Fine Food website is really, you know, the go-to place because it has really detailed information, and it really, you know, we can do it over the phone, but it's much more direct for folks to just visit that.
Thank you, Eileen.
Go to Commissioner Beaman.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to echo my fellow commissioners, and thank you for all the work you're doing, especially for coming out to Mylan. In my district, our federal workers at the prison are not asking for this government shutdown. They're being asked to come to work every single day. And as Commissioner Sanders is alluding to, they have to choose between gas to get to work and feeding their families. And I'm just going to get a very bit political here and state that for a government that is concerned about imprisoning people, they aren't caring for our correctional officers. And so I care so much that you care and just cannot thank you enough for what you're doing for our community right now and the burden that's on your shoulders that should not be.
Thank you.
Other questions for, for Eileen? What else can the county do aside from what we've done? And what else can we just be prepared for that you, that you can know, given how unknowable the future is here in this world?
Yeah, I think, you know, sharing the Fine Food, Need Food kind of message, like that's really helpful. And, you know, I do think that Food Gatherers is distributing like 70 to 80% of the food that most of our pantries rely on. We are not covering all their operating costs and their additional costs to, you know, add new distributions, et cetera. And, you know, that will add up the longer this, this shutdown continues. That I think everyone can rise up for a couple of weeks. It will be hard to sustain that level of distribution activity beyond November.
Any other questions for Eileen while she's with us?
And I do have some extra ones of these if anyone needs them, but I'll leave with Ashley. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your time tonight, Eileen, and for everything you're doing. We appreciate it and you.
Thank you. I appreciate your support.
Move then to Commissioner Sanders.
I just have a question that maybe someone can answer for all of us at some point. I'd be curious to know if we have any idea how many federal employees we actually have in Washtenaw County that are being affected? Just for curiosity.
Sure. I, I do not and would love to get that number, too.
Thank you.
Commissioner Scott may have that number.
Somewhere deep in my files, I have that number. I will look for it. I know that I've, I've gotten that number before.
Great. Move to item three, which is our HUD update. We're going to preface it with a brief clip of the, of the documentary that's being made on our social services safety net here in Washtenaw County. And Ashley, if I've sort of put you on the spot here and you don't have it loaded, great, great.
Let's take a live look right now over Ann Arbor for you here on this Tuesday morning. The city is taking honors in several new rankings, saying that it is one of the best cities in which to live.
It's a high honor for the city of Ann Arbor being named Most Educated in America.
Ann Arbor draws people in because of the university, big football games, innovation, advancing just society.
Ann Arbor is definitely known as a city where you can raise a family and really live out this idea of an American dream. There's nothing you can't do in Ann Arbor. It's sort of like its own bubble in the state of Michigan.
You know, we have about 75% of what you get in a big city and about 15% of the problems. It's, you know, it's a great place to live.
This is a close-knit community, actually. It's a melting pot. Everyone comes here. Everyone is welcome. So now I actually call Ypsilanti my home.
Part of what does make Washtenaw County unique is, you know, we're, we're the sixth-largest county in Michigan. So we are small but not tiny. And so that allows for you to have personal relationships with folks. Trust comes from relationships, competence, and follow-through. And so that ability to have those actual relationships with people, I think are really, really important.
I mean, it's a destination place where people want to come. So it's a great place to be, but that also means that we have individuals that are unhoused that come here as well. Why? They want the same opportunities we all have. They want to be part of this great and vibrant community. So we need to find a way in which we can all live comfortably.
Like pretty much every community, I think, there are also a lot of folks who are struggling in Washtenaw County. And I would add that when you're in a community that has a lot of affluence, it almost makes it even harder for those folks who aren't seeing that affluence, who aren't participating in it.
What people don't see on the local level is the disparities in housing and kind of the haves and have-nots.
I think the public mostly is unaware that the folks who work at the university or at the hospital or at the restaurants downtown don't actually live in Ann Arbor because it's unaffordable.
A lot of it boils down to the systems that are in place. So when we talk about housing and homelessness, that's just one symptom of a much bigger problem.
It's often been said that being poor is incredibly expensive. Well, that is front and center in Washtenaw County, because people who are struggling economically, people who are, who are poor, everything's more expensive, whether it's housing or food or transportation. Everything's more expensive, and you're also pushing up against, you know, those other folks who have more buying power.
You know, we have, you know, lots of challenges, and you've described them. You also have the, the healthcare infrastructure that makes, you know, that provides challenges because people aren't able to access the healthcare that they need, the mental health services that they need, addiction support that they need. These are services, human services, that we know are crucial to, to keep people housed.
We, we are always full, and there is a waiting list that is usually between 120 and 130 families long. And no matter what we seem to do, all our community partners working together on this is never enough.
The Manchester Resource Center has been, to me, like lifesaving, for sure. Yes, lifesaving. The food alone. The food alone. Has saved us numerous, numerous times. The fact that they offer, you know, like household cleaning products and things like that. You take things for granted. You take things for granted. Do you know that I haven't had salt on my food for two years? I don't take medications that I'm supposed to take. I. I don't go to the doctor anymore. And I'm disabled too, so.
Everybody's saying all this stuff is available and it's not. I'm still here day forty. This is day forty. I'm still here. Doing the same thing. When this resource rich county say that, hey, if you go after these resources, we'll make them available to you. I've done that.
The bottom line is the bottom line. And so what's being done to make sure that that funding is sufficient at the local level? Uh, you know, there is an opportunity for local officials to put more money in at the local level. And I think Washtenaw County is actually, uh, as frustrating as the current provision of housing services is in Washtenaw County. From what I can tell, Washtenaw County does a lot more of that than other counties. But despite that, we still have these huge holes.
For our purposes, the continuum of care is really positioned to support those that are experiencing homelessness. According to HUD's definitions of homelessness, there is, um, a third category that, um, HUD gets to decide which communities pertain to that. So this is really like in the policy realm, but, um, it's important to distinguish that because our call center, which is our front door to coordinated entry. It's how we get folks entered into our homeless management information system and identified so that we can triage them appropriately for services. We get calls from a lot of different people and sometimes those people don't fit the criteria that we can support, unfortunately. And that's because for right now, at the time of this recording, we are primarily funded through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. We get seven point three million on an annual basis, though it's really important to note that right now that is the funding that's currently at jeopardy of being cut.
So thank you for your indulgence on the on the clip. We'll, uh, turn it over now to Kristen Kunes, our Housing and C O C Supervisor from O C D to sort of pick up and give us an update of what's going on.
Hi, folks. Thanks for having me today. And thanks for the introduction, Andy. Um, Tapas passing around, um, a document that, um, goes into greater depth, what I'm covering on these slides. So I'll pivot a little bit to give you, um, more information. But again, my name is Kristen Kunes. I'm the C O C Supervisor with, um, the Office of Community and Economic Development. I'm here on behalf of the Continuum of Care Board. That is our governing body. And so this information was really, uh, developed in collaboration with all of our C O C members and our housing providers. So really today's goal is to inform you first and foremost, to present the facts and what we know. And the projections of the impacts of the future funding cuts, to clarify, to help increase your understanding to the broader system implications that are at stake. And to mobilize, inspire urgency and drive towards supporting mitigation strategies or responses. So why did this matter? Oh, yeah. Let me actually move this. Two.
So sorry.
No, it's good. Thank you. Um, so as I, um, as you heard, uh, every year, uh, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, um, allocates Washtenaw County seven point three million. That money currently funds housing and services for over six hundred residents, including children, seniors, veterans. Individuals with physical, mental health, developmental disorders, survivors of domestic violence. Loss or substantial shifts to this funding would severely disrupt our local operations and place hundreds of vulnerable residents at immediate risk of losing housing stability. So what is the HUD C O C program? Um, it's HUD's main program for ending homelessness and addressing homelessness. It funds local organizations that provide rental assistance, supportive housing and case management to individuals and families that are experiencing literal homelessness. Think of it as our coordinated entry system. It provides the structure for how we address and respond to homelessness. Provides a funding for emergency shelters, for rapid rehousing and long term housing programs working together to move people from crisis to stability. It's really the bread and butter of our community's housing system. So just to give you a bit of context, I'm gonna pivot now to what you have, um, in the five page report that goes into greater detail. If you look on page two, I'm just gonna go ahead and read that off. I I want to note that this is the most complicated funding source that we have in our community. It's really confusing even for those that work in the system. So I want to make sure that I'm not mincing words and explaining what the implications are. They have not yet come to fruition, but I'm just gonna read off on page two in the executive summary. So this funding is an annual allocation. The Biden administration previously before they ended their term, transitioned this to two year grants. That was our best belief to protect this funding because they were expecting that under a different administration, it was likely that it would change. Unfortunately, that protection is not stable anymore. On July third, twenty twenty five, HUD unexpectedly announced a new competition. So taking back that two year grant that we believed was going to come to fruition. And signaling that a competition, a funding competition was going to be released. That is the notice of funding opportunity. It has not yet been released because of the government shutdown. And so we still don't have any more, any information into when that will shift and if that will shift. Historically, it takes six months or more for the NOFO, the Notice of Funding Opportunity, um, from the issuance to grant awards. So if this timeline holds, awards might not be announced until May twenty twenty six or later. Meanwhile, our earliest grants in our community will expire in April. So again, it's important to know that it hasn't come to fruition yet, but we are expecting that it will. Does that piece make sense? Okay, great. So who are we talking about when I talk about this population? So we know that homelessness in Washtenaw County does not affect everyone equally. Nearly seventy-eight percent of families experiencing homelessness are headed by black women. Ninety-two percent of families are led by single mothers. And nearly half of single adults identify as black. These numbers show that housing instability is deeply tied to racial, gender and economic inequities. Cuts to this funding would hit those communities the hardest. That's from our twenty twenty two racial disparity assessment. We're currently working on our twenty twenty five. These are three year reports. So this system isn't run by one agency. It's a partnership, as you know. It incorporates Avalon Housing, S O S Community Services, Ozone House, Michigan, Michigan Ability Partners, Safe House. And our Housing Commission and all others that deliver the essential housing case management programs funded through the C O C. When this funding is disrupted, it affects the entire network. So what exactly is potentially changing at the federal level? The proposed federal changes shift funding away from permanent supportive housing and rapid rehousing, programs that have been proven to work. And instead prioritize what's called transitional housing. Your reports on page one have a very detailed, uh, key term to give you a better sense of what terms, what this means. Um, but essentially, uh, these changes add barriers like sobriety or treatment compliance before someone can access housing. This is a deviation from Housing First, which is the model that most communities have been using, including our own. Housing First is known as, um, it's our current model. It's our long term stability. It doesn't offer preconditions for housing. It's proven to reduce homelessness. Again, what we're shifting and believing that's happening to shift at the federal level is a change to a conditional model. Short term transitional housing, requiring sobriety and mental health compliance and expected to increase returns to homelessness. So if these cuts go through, the immediate impacts are severe. Potentially beginning as early as April first, twenty twenty six. The immediate impact would be potentially a delay in housing placements, frozen federal grant grants and possible loss of rental assistance. Moving into a medium term impact, fewer staff and housing resources, slower rehousing. Fuller shelters and rising unsheltered homelessness. And then long term impacts would be reduced stability, shrinking capacity among agencies, longer wait times to getting housing resources. And rising unsheltered homelessness, putting permanent housing and county resources at risk. Why does this matter beyond housing? Permanent supportive housing doesn't just save lives, it saves public dollars. Providing housing and services costs far less than cycling people through shelters, emergency jails and emergency rooms and jails. And this is the most cost effective, evidence based approach that keeps our community healthier and stable. On your, uh, report, you can find a little bit more about who we're talking about, that, um, the scope of impact. So if you look on page four, um, we'll starting on. Page four, um, you'll see the projects that are potentially at risk of being defunded or having funding get cut. And who's currently in those projects? You'll see a breakdown of the number of households, the number of people in those households, the number of children under the age of seventeen, seventeen and under. Our older adults, fifty-five years and older. Those that have, were fleeing domestic violence, um, within a year before program entry. The number of veterans that this potentially impacts. You'll also see a breakdown of the number of people that experience a mental health disorder or developmental disability. The number of people that have a self reported alcohol or drug use disorder, physical disability and most importantly, as well as racial demographics. This information comes from our homeless management information system. So these reports pulled, were pulled on October fifteenth. Um, again, this is a moving target, but just wanted to kind of drive home what the scope of impact is and who we're talking about at risk. So what are we doing right now? If we wanted to first and foremost inform you all of what's coming and what we believe is coming. Right now, we're maximizing every federal dollar that we have in our system and ensuring it's utilized. We're exploring conversions. Um, so the model that HUD is signaling their transitioning away from our current project models to transitional housing. We're seeing which projects are potentially eligible for that to maximize the funding that might come to our community. We're partnering with one another and clients to really determine what's, um, what is our best option. And identifying other funding sources to protect. Um, our most evidence based model in our community. So what do we need right now? First and foremost, advocacy efforts are really still underway. Um, there's been some really great success. And so joining state and federal advocacy efforts, um, for HUD program stability and really requiring HUD honor the two year agreements that were previously put into place. Championing local solutions to fill funding gaps and preserve proven programs, your action now can help prevent hundreds of residents from losing housing later. And authoring, authorizing contingency measures to sustain rental assistance and case management if federal funds relapse. So in closing, our homelessness response system has built proven pathways from crisis to stability. Federal disruption threatens to unravel that progress, but with proactive local leadership, we can protect housing, preserve dignity and prevent homelessness. And together we can ensure no one loses their home because of a federal budget decision.
So Kristen, before we do questions, I did want to offer both our racial equity officer, Derek Jackson, and our C M H Director, Trish Cortez, just a chance to. Add on to this before we open it up for Q and A. Trish, since you were first in getting up to the podium, let me defer to you.
I'm quicker than he is. We're sly. Uh, good evening, Commissioners. Um, so it definitely has not been lost upon me that all your agenda items tonight for working session have a deep impact on the C M H, uh, population that we serve. Um, I did not exactly know the name of the organization that was making those blankets, but I recognize them, uh, because they are actually stacked. On top of my bookshelf in my own office, I have those blankets. Um, I mentioned it to them when we walked out and, uh, the ones in my office are like a navy, like a, uh, an army green color. So they want me to let you know that they also come in two colors and multiple colors. They just have a chance to tell you. So, and with, you know, SNAP as well, I mean, that's also, I mean, these are all the supportive services that the people that C M H serves need. Uh, to keep them, um, you know, afloat and stable and healthy. And housing is certainly, um, as important as critical. So in C M H, we always refer to housing as treatment. Um, that that's, you know, it is, it is a form of treatment for many that we serve. Um, and so the impact on all of this is is tremendous, all of it, but the housing is is really is is very critical. I did, uh, try to pull some data before coming here today. Um, and I was able to get some data from, um, our partners over at the Ann Arbor Housing Commission from Jennifer Hall. And, uh, she gave us a list of all the addresses, um, that would be impacted by the changes that Kristen has, um, described to you today. And when we just ran a query in our system of how many individuals are living in these addresses that have had any type of contact with C M H. Is sixty percent of our of our folks, or sixty percent of folks living in those, in those units actually have had some type of contact with C M H. When you look further on of of folks who have had longstanding relationships of twenty years or, I mean, then we, that that number goes to thirty percent. So as you can just see, that this is a critical, critical issue to keeping the folks that we serve healthy, stable and in our communities. I will also mention that, uh, C M H, since we have recognized this and also with the blessing of this board who ultimately, uh, um, approves our village. Uh, initiatives, um, in the last, if you look at our impact report, uh, the the C M H portion of the village has already as, uh. Allocated over one point three million dollars during for, uh, supportive housing. Um, and in that report, that report, um, indicates that we have helped keep housed over two hundred and twenty-five individuals. So this is a a critical, critical, uh, issue for, you know, for C M H, the people that we serve. Um, and so I'm here to really just emphasize and support, uh, my colleague Kristen here, um, has shared with you tonight. And I'll let Derek go.
Uh, thanks for asking, Commissioner. I think, um, I'm just gonna point your attention, uh, you know, uh, within the policy you passed years ago around equity. And then the title of my position is racial equity. On slide seven in particular, it talks about how closely tied this issue is to racial equity. With forty-seven percent of single adults being, uh, in our county who are homeless, who are black. Uh, seventy-eight percent of families who are homeless are black. We don't often talk about the racial component of homelessness in Washtenaw County, but I just want to elevate that and and put a pin in it. And ninety-two percent of the families who we are talking about are homeless, single head of household by women. So when you really break those numbers down, we're talking about, uh, a black mother issue around homelessness in Washtenaw County. So when it comes to racial equity, this is, I think, one of the preeminent, uh, things and topics we need to really focus on. I will say the, just three other things that I want to highlight from the presentation Kristen gave. You know, we're talking about really cost effective, evidence based, proven strategies to keep people, uh, permanently housed. And so to think about that now being under attack on top of the racial equity component, we're talking about things that actually work. Uh, to prevent people from being, um, homelessness, uh, that would would shift and that specific shift. And this is something I've always asked in our community. Are we really about helping people move out of poverty or are we just helping people deal with the crisis? This would be a shift from permanency, permanent supportive housing into transitional. And so you're moving from permanently helping people stay off of the streets and families, uh, into the idea of transitional and people moving through this cycle of. Maybe having a place to stay for a while and then, uh, having to search. To me, particularly in a community like ours where, although there's some great things that were elevated at the beginning of the video clip. One of the things that we struggle with the most is the ability to lift yourself out of poverty. So I think there are some larger implications, uh, that, yes, start with the C O C conversation, but really around, um, uh. The ability to move into, um, or out of poverty, I think, in Washtenaw County. So I just wanted to highlight those pieces. I think we around the C O C Subcommittee Table have talked about. I think Eileen has talked about this around food insecurity, knowing that, uh, food gatherers cannot, uh, do what SNAP does. They can't replace the federal government. I think it's the same when we think about C O C and HUD. If HUD truly does collapse or this goes on for a very long time. I think we understand it's unrealistic to think about county or just local government recreating that mechanism. But the ability to think now creatively around long term strategies is really what I think is a big piece that I wanted to leave you with. So happy to answer any questions.
Great. Uh, thank you all three, and we'll open it up for questions and we'll start with Commissioner Somerville, then Hodge.
Yeah, thank you. Um, thanks for all three of you, um, being here. Um, I guess mostly just some comments. Um, I work pretty closely with, uh, C M H, obviously because I'm on the board and I, uh, in Ypsil, we've had a lot of. Um, just circumstances that have required, uh, more immediate responses, whether it's with family hoteling or situations where we, like. Me or other commissioners find people outside on the streets in the winter. Um, I just kind of want to, like, always, when I get the chance to thank C M H for the stuff that you all do kind of outside. Of, I think, the box that we're all used to thinking about in terms of our response to an emergency crisis with housing. Um, and I see Shona in the audience, um, really excited for the new space this month. Um, and I think, like, when I think of that, I think of what we all need to be doing collectively, which is thinking outside of the box. If we do experience shifts in federal funding and how we can use it. And I've been saying this, like, really since I've been on the board. But we need to figure out ways to shift general fund dollars into the housing and homelessness space in this county because then we can be more flexible with them. Um, you know, are we looking at the data like? You know, are we looking at the data, like, someone can access barrier busters once a year, but then what happens six months later? Obviously, it's cheaper for us to prevent homelessness than it is for the family or individual to become homeless later. And so I guess I'm just encouraging us all to think of ways that we can work together across CMH and OCD and providers out in the community and honestly take advantage of our partnership with Alpha House and Shona, because I think they have experienced a lot of really, like, just creative approaches to family homelessness crisis, and that's obviously, like, impacting IPSE really hard and kids that go, you know, go to IPSE schools. And so just want to uplift the fact that we have a lot of really great work being done in the county, and we should, you know, not, we don't need to reinvent the wheel because we have all the tools that we need. And if we can find ways to use more of our general fund, we don't have to worry about restrictions, and we can prevent some of the the families that are actually, like, being totally kicked out of their homes. So I basically a long way of saying thank you. I think we have good tools in the toolbox, but it might be time to, like, try to get ahead of what the, you know, the impending doom. So thank you, which I think is that that's probably why you're here, right? So.
Maybe not couched as ahead of the impending doom, but that's probably an effective way to describe it, yes. Commissioner Hodge.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, Derek. Whoops. Thanks for the presentation. I know this is probably the worst time to be focused on this kind of work, given the the national climate, but you all continue to do so much work, and this space is really critical for everyone here, so I'm grateful for that. I wanted to ask, I don't want you to confer with each other, given funding is in a place where it's not as, you know, flush with cash as we were with the American Rescue Plan Act, if you all could pick one thing for us to focus on that would have, like, the most critical impact, what would that be?
Go ahead.
I'm having a hard time. We need to protect our permanent supportive housing projects. Those are the ones that are immediate, going to be immediately attacked. This administration has signaled they have no interest in in preserving that funding, no interest in protecting these households. We are talking about households that are chronically homeless. You can see on page one, the definition of someone that is chronic chronically homeless, they are disabled households that have experienced the longest stretches of homelessness. This administration has no interest in funding support long term. And so we know that there's not going to be funding at the federal level. We aren't expecting any funding at the state level to fund those projects. Those are our legacy projects that have been longstanding for years. My my answer to that would be authorizing contingency funding and earmarking it to protect if this does come to fruition, and we have every reason to believe it is going to come to fruition, ensuring we have funds to protect those that have been housed for years and need to stay housed. That would be my answer.
Ditto. I would just say, I asked this question to the subcommittee, right? The the experts that are sitting around the table who live and breathe this work all the time. And in addition to that, I think what you said, Commissioner Somerville, it's cheaper to prevent someone from losing their home or their housing, and so dollars that can go into the prevention of someone losing that residency in the first place.
I think I'll take a little bit of a different angle, and I think what I'd ask for all of you to do is to really think about all these different potential funding streams, and how do we use them all by bringing them together to be most effective? So, I mean, I think that's going to your point, Commissioner Somerville, of being really creative that, you know, the CMH, you know, CMH Public Safety Millage can be flexible in ways to help with all these problems that we're talking about today. I've had many people talk to me about, what about the senior millage? So I did actually bring in the numbers. We have about, we have four hundred individuals who are right now being served by CMH, who are sixty-five plus. So where where is there some opportunity maybe there? So what I would ask as a priority of the group is, these are all major priorities. All the folks that, like I told you already earlier tonight, all the things that we talked about tonight impact our people. They have to be fed, they have to be housed, and they have to be warm if they're unhoused. So what I would ask is for all collectively to make sure that we are looking at all these funding streams and how can we maximize them to best meet all these priority needs.
That's helpful. Thank you.
We'll go back to Commissioner Somerville.
Thank you. You said millage, and so, yeah, I've been saying this for quite some time. In fact, like, we made some really good changes to the Mental Health and Public Safety Millage before it was back on the ballot last year. And when we adopted the framework for the senior millage, we were very intentional about including eliminating older adult homelessness in Washtenaw County. And so just putting it out there, it's November. I don't know when the director of Aging Services is going to be hired, but I think we should all, like, and the admin team should start thinking now. We have the data from you all on older adults and overlaps with the CMH system, and there's ways for us to start working on that now, like, how much of the senior millage per year are we going to invest in preventing homelessness and keeping people stabilized in their housing? I think we can do that before a director is actually actively in this building. So we should get ahead of the game. And I think with the Public Safety and Mental Health Millage, we can already see what CMH side is doing. We put some requirements on the public safety side, and so I think there's no reason for us to all get into a room and just figure out the bottom line on the public safety and mental health knowledge as well. So just wanted to lift that up because it is, there's a direct correlation with homelessness and public safety issues, because we penalize people for being homeless in this country, and we have all the tools in the toolbox to not do that. So thank you for mentioning the millage.
I want to open it up to others as well, but we'll go back to Commissioner Hodge.
Thank you. I swear this is not going to be me in commission. We're not going to keep going back and forth all night, maybe, I don't know. So Trish, you got me thinking, when you mentioned sixty-five and older, how difficult would it be for you to pull the data again and just look at sixty and older? Because the way we frame the millage is sixty and older. So I, and I know that, I mean, I've had to tell this to other community groups too, and thinking about within the county too. We put sixty in there so we'd be able to serve more people.
Yeah, we can, we get that data from you. I did pull forty, because when we break it out, we do forty to sixty-four, then sixty-five up. In the forty to sixty-four category, we have eighteen hundred. So, you know, we, but we can definitely get that. So you've got about four hundred, sixty-five plus, and then we can also find out what the sixty pluses.
Thank you.
Kristen, can you talk just a little bit, and colleagues, if you have a question, please just raise your hand? You mentioned that we are being proactive right now. You mentioned basically a seven point three million dollar hole. What can the, what part of that hole can those proactive steps maybe, if not fill, at least temper in terms of immediate negative impact?
Yeah. Thank you. That's a great question. So I want to preface this, this is a moving target because of the government shutdown and the fact that HUD has not released that NOFO, that Notice of Funding Opportunity, which really gives us the written information of what truly are they going to choose to prioritize? This really is kind of a moving target. And so I think what we've been able to look at based on the information, the preliminary information that has come out is the two point three four million would be needed to protect and preserve those permanent supportive housing projects that would potentially not have funding. So that's kind of the number, keeping in mind, this is a moving target, but that's the number that of the current projects that are currently funded, the supportive services dollars, so the staffing that support those clients, the rental assistance dollars to maintain their housing, that would be at risk of being permanently pulled. And so that's kind of the number. But when more information comes out, we'll be able to drill in and zero in on what exactly that dollar amount is. We are expecting an annual allocation from HUD, but they're being really clear that they're only choosing to provide support to temporary housing options, and we know that does not meet the need of the clients that are coming into contact with our system. They need long-term solutions, so that would be two point three four million on an annual basis, but it's likely that that number would likely be larger. Does that answer your question? I know it's kind of complicated.
It it does answer, and one, I want to assure you, we're not going to hold you to anything. Predictability is not the hallmark of this administration. So the point I was going to ask about was, we don't do all this from the county directly. We depend on a lot of external partners. If this money doesn't come through, who makes up for the external partners, you know, on any of that? How do they make payroll and so forth?
That's a great question. Right now, our partners are looking into their reserves and creating contingency plans. There's anywhere between three to six months of reserves for our nonprofits that differs depending on which nonprofit we're talking about. That is not enough to provide that long-term support that would need to be covered. And so as you can see in that report on page five, we'd really be looking at those potential implications for, in the red, longer stints of homelessness, staff cuts. So I think that, I don't, hopefully that answers some of your question. I also kind of want to go back to what you had shared about what else are we doing and what you had shared around kind of thinking creatively. Right now, we're really looking at all of the pass-through funding that comes through the Office of Community and Economic Development and being really thoughtful of what existing funds we have that could potentially be reallocated. So we're doing that work now, knowing that April is kind of our moving target. But it's important to be transparent that in polling funding, we were looking at polling funding and reallocating from one partner to another, so it creates instability in other systems. And so it's not a great option, but things we are looking into to help supplement the funding that potentially would be cut.
I I think we are sort of swimming in need at this board on a number of areas and appreciate that you guys are being proactive in terms of demonstrating what you're doing and and trying not to just, you know, ask for additional resources without those steps in hand. So I appreciate it, Kristen. Other questions for our presenters at this time? Commissioner Somerville?
Sorry, not a question for the presenters, but just in the context of what they shared with us tonight, I would encourage the nine of us, one who's not here tonight, to put our heads together and actually pass a resolution where we direct the, like, the firm that we pay to lobby for us in Lansing to actually advocate for us to either get one-time funding or for the state of Michigan to invest more in permanent supportive housing. We have one person who represent what's, who represents Washtenaw County, who's been fighting for more permanent supportive housing in the state budget, and he's terminated after next year. And so I think it would be a really good use of our time and the resources that we already invest in our lobbying services to have a more concentrated focus on getting the state to invest permanent supportive housing dollars, because when we started advocating for more money at the state in the state budget a couple of years ago, people were looking at us like we were crazy, because they didn't understand what permanent supportive housing was. But then we've been, you know, over the last couple of years, been successful in getting a little bit of money here and there for a statewide response. But we could try to get an earmark that's focused in Washtenaw County. We could try to get more funding to help preserve the already existing permanent supportive housing providers in the state that would benefit us and other counties. And so I just, like, obviously, we have resources internal to the county already with millages and things like that, but I also think we should be asking, we should be asking Michigan Association of Counties to be working, like, we're a member, we should be asking them to fight for this type of funding in the state budget. Thanks.
Commissioner Hodge?
Thank you. I don't know if I know who Commissioner Somerville was referring to. Commissioner Somerville, who was that one person, that one person in Lansing you might have been referring to? You want to answer?
Senator Irwin.
Okay. I thought so. If you were to make a motion in the later board meeting to direct the lobbying firm do that, I would second it. All right. Thank you.
It is the Justin and Annie Show tonight.
Any other questions for our presenters here? I do want to echo, I think Commissioner Somerville, her comment about senior millage and other sources, particularly the public safety aspect, which she was so helpful in delineating in the last go-around of that, I think those are great places to look. Thank you, all three, for being here with us. We appreciate it, and we'll, you know, be back in touch, unfortunately. I must admit, I'm surprised we're here at this point in the evening, but we are through our discussion items. Any items for current or future discussion? Since there are not, I would entertain anybody moving to adjourn.
Would we adjourn?
All right. We are adjourned. We are adjourned.
I'm so sorry. Bye.
Okay, we're gonna have you guys talk to us about what that 4H pledge means to you and means to your community, is that correct? You guys are prepared? I'm not springing something on you? Okay, go ahead.
My name is Genevieve. I'm at seventeen. I go to Dexter and I've been in 4H for about seven years.
My name's Amelia. I'm fourteen. I live in Manchester and I've been in 4H for nine years. I have a little speech. Washtenaw County 4H just finished our 2024-2025 program year and we had 537 youth enrolled in our program. We also had 2,238 youth attend our programs, including Project Red, which stands for Rural Education Days, 4H Junior Master Gardeners, 4H Ceramic Programs, Small Engine Workshops, and so many more. We currently have twenty-five 4H clubs that provide educational and leadership opportunities to youth and also five advisory groups with youth officers that provide oversight for our programs. We also have Washtenaw County 4H youth serving on the State Youth Leadership Council for Michigan 4H and a youth who was just sworn in as a trustee for the Michigan 4H Foundation. We also worked with more than ten partner organizations across the county this year, including partners in Ann Arbor like Neutral Zone, those in Ypsilanti like the Farm at Trinity Health and others spread across the county like Washtenaw Farm Council and Washtenaw County Farm Bureau. This fall, we also started a collaboration with the 102.9 W4 Country and have had youth speaking on the radio to help spread the word about 4H. We couldn't have had this impact without funding from the Washtenaw County and we would like to thank you for your continued support.
Hello, my name's Isabella Berger. I'm sixteen years old and this is actually only my second year doing 4H.
4H has given me a community where I was able to find myself. It has given me the resources to develop true leadership skills and learn how to raise livestock and explore my interests. I have now got, I now get to support younger members and be a part of that community for them in my club. I have become a leader in my club and out, and it has expanded outside of it as well. Without 4H, public speaking like this would have never been something that I thought I could achieve a few years ago.
That's phenomenal. You guys have anything else you want to add? Okay, well, I want to think. I want to... Thank you for being here. I think everybody loves the 4H pledge. And we've talked before about even incorporating it as part of this meeting. I think we should have that conversation again because I think it's really phenomenal and it exemplifies a lot of the work that we do here at the table. I am never shy about telling anybody how old I am, although the older I get, the shyer I get. But I'm fifty-three and I want to join 4H and come to some of these things that you guys are doing because it sounds phenomenal and I think it's great that you're involved and I hope that you guys keep coming here and I hope we're able to keep helping with funding for the program too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ashley.
Chair, really quickly, I apologize for the interruption. So they actually did bring some gifts as well, which are on the table, which are available to anyone in the audience. Just some more information about 4H.
Oh, lovely.
Just wanted to make sure everyone in the room knew.
That's so cool. Wow. That's how I was raised, to take a gift when you go someplace. Okay, at this time we'll have public participation. If you are a member of the public who's here, oh, wait, we want to call the roll. I got two ahead of us again. Let's find out which commissioners are here for the record. Camden, thank you.
Commissioner Beaman.
Present.
Commissioner Hodge.
Here.
Commissioner Labar.
Here.
Commissioner Light.
Commissioner Machieski.
Here.
Commissioner Robbie. Commissioner Sanders.
Present.
Commissioner Scott.
I'm here.
Commissioner Somerville.
Here.
Okay, now, now we can do public participation. If you're here and you would like to give public comment, you can come on up to the podium, introduce yourself with your name and your township or city in which you live. You'll have three minutes. There's a system of lights that happens. Green means go, keep going, you're good. When that light starts to turn yellow, it means your time's almost up. There's about thirty seconds left. When it's red, that means your time is up. I'll ask you to wrap up your thoughts. I'll give you a minute to get there. If you go much further, I will interrupt you, not because I'm rude, but because I'm looking to make sure things stay fair for everybody. Would anybody like to comment in public participation?
Good evening, Board, Administration, and staff. My name is Janice Townsend and I am the current Chair for the Washtenaw County Community Action Board, which is under the leadership, we serve as an advisory board for the Office of Community Economic and Development. And this is our Vice Chair, Ms. Kathy Wyatt. And many times, the purpose of us being here tonight is, one, many times with the busyness of life and all the things that are currently going on to today's society, many times our leaders and organizations that do the work in the community are not recognized or given their flowers. So as a board that focuses on making things better within the community, we wanted to make sure that we did provide you all with your flowers tonight, just to show recognition and have it on the board, on the board meeting minutes that we are here to just to say thank you. So this letter was adopted on October twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five, and it is addressed, and you all should have copies in your packets, to Lonzo Lewis, President of Trinity Health Administration, the Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners, Alpha House and Interface Hospitality Network, Office of Senator Jeff Irwin, and then House into Home. This letter is of recognition and appreciation. Dear Trinity Health, Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners, Alpha House, Senator Irwin, and House into Home. The Community Action Board, known as CAB, serves as an advisory capacity to the Board of Commissioners and the Office of Community and Economic Development, known as OCED, which is the, I'm sorry, I'm getting older, you all, which is the Community Action Agency for Washtenaw County on matters pertaining to the causes and consequences of poverty. In addition, CAB acts as an advocate for low-income citizens in promoting institutional and community changes which removes barriers to self-sufficiency. As part of our advisory and advocacy role related to poverty, its causes and consequences, the Community Action Board would like to recognize and express appreciation to the partners that work together to create the shelter on the east side of the county focused on servicing families. The national housing crisis, which has been a major driver of devastation rise in homelessness here in Washtenaw County, affects families and children particularly hard with more than a hundred parents and children on Washtenaw Counties that are currently in Washtenaw Counties' family shelter waiting list and eight to ten families losing housing each week, per Trinity Health's media release. The new family shelter will provide thirty individual units that can accommodate up to four beds, each with its own bathroom. These individual units are being furnished by House Into Home so that the families moving in will feel welcome and at home. The family shelter is located on Trinity Health's campus with access to bus routes, major employers, educational institutions, and essential services provided. The families will receive a support services that they need, which will help them become self-sufficient and able to provide better lives for themselves and their children as well as become contributing members of our community. With families along with seniors experiencing the highest increase in homelessness in Washtenaw County and in particular, the lifelong negative impacts of homelessness on children, the new family shelter is a major positive step forward in addressing the needs of some of the most vulnerable residents of Washtenaw County. The CAB commands the cooperation and efforts of Washtenaw County, Trinity Health, Senator Irwin's office, Alpha House, and House Into Home that made this happen. Thank you to all involved sincerely. And Janice Townsend, Chair, Kathy Wyatt, Vice Chair, Commissioner Justin Hodge, Commissioner Shannon Beaman, Yvonne Cudney, Candace Spencer, Courtney Cruz, Crystal Stewart, Bonnie Phillips, Jr., Faith Redwine, Otino, Madden Litten, Emily Hasty, Mayor Pat Valencourt, and Councilman Chris Watson. And if you have any other members of the CAB that are here, if you could please stand.
And then I'm gonna, you've been blinking red for a while.
Okay, well, I appreciate it.
Hard to interrupt somebody when they're saying something nice about you.
I'm an advocate of efficiency at the meeting, so I will take my seat. But again, thank you for your service and we look forward to continuing to working with you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, there you go. Just come on up, yeah.
Hello, I'm Mary Ann Opal. I'm the Executive Director of Mylan Seniors for Healthy Living. And first and foremost, I would like to thank the entire Board for your consideration of the resolution of adding MSHL to the list of qualifying senior centers and subsequent funding. I would also like to say a special thank you to Commissioner Beaman, Ashley Hall, and Brady Peck for their time and interest in MSHL, the programs and services that we provide to seniors in southern Washtenaw County. Thank you for tirelessly getting MSHL on the agenda tonight. We are honored and extremely grateful to serve seniors in a county that places so much emphasis and importance on the senior community. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Courtney Vanderlon. I'm a resident of Ypsilanti Township and the Director of Ann Arbor Meals on Wheels. I want to thank you tonight for your commitment to older adults in our county and for your support of the Meals on Wheels and Senior Cafe programs in our community. As a safety net for older adults continues to erode, our neighbors and your constituents are counting on us more than ever to provide healthy, prepared meals, wellness checks, connection to their community, and support so they can age in place safely. From August to October of this year, Ann Arbor Meals on Wheels has served forty-nine more unduplicated clients compared to this time last year, which is a sixteen percent increase from what we were seeing last year. This increase in clients resulted in us providing fifty-four hundred more meals than that timeframe last year, which is a nineteen percent increase. While our operational volunteer and staffing capacity is being stretched extremely thin to meet the growing nutritional needs of older adults in our community, we're grateful for your responsiveness.
Hello. My name's Janet Hunko. I work with the Housing Bureau for Seniors. I also help facilitate the Skip Program, Senior Crisis Intervention Program. So I ask myself a lot of times, how is success measured? When it comes to people, we generally look at upward trajectory. A lot of times we think about younger people. We grade them through their school years, first grade, second grade, third grade, as they're going up. With older adults, it's not quite that easy. An older adult's success is sometimes level. I'm saying that to say, Skip, Senior Crisis Intervention Program, helps people maintain where they are in life. This has been proven true over the past several years. I've been involved with this. This could come, you know, their help, it could come by some way. I'm sorry, I'm getting my lines mixed up here. So Skip, the way it helps people, it helps them in a way. It could come by with some extra help in mitigating unexpected crises, which could start a downward spiral for them. It starts them down a trajectory, causing the older adult to become even more vulnerable than they already are. So today I just want to say thank you mostly to even considering an additional allocation for the Skip Program. It's been done wonders for the past year. It has been done wonders for the past several years. So thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Yvonne Cudney. I work with the Housing Bureau for Seniors. I'm a resident of the city of Ypsilanti. And as Janet already said, HBS is one of the member agencies of the Senior Crisis Intervention Program, Skip as we call it. Ann Arbor Meals on Wheels, Ypsilanti Meals on Wheels, Jewish Family Services, Catholic Charities of Washtenaw County are also members of Skip. On May seventh, the Board of Commissioners allocated a hundred thousand dollars to Skip to help keep older adults housed. On June first, we opened up the Skip application process to Washtenaw County Barrier Buster Agencies, so beyond the initial Skip Agencies. Between that date and October twenty-fourth, Skip spent ninety-eight thousand dollars to keep older adults safely and sustainably housed. There were a total of a hundred and two applications, of which sixty-eight were funded. Forty-nine of the funded applications were from the four-eight-one-nine-seven and four-one, four-eight-one-nine-eight ZIP codes. And half of the funded applications were provided to households that had incomes below the poverty levels. Ninety-seven percent of them had incomes below the ALIS thresholds. These are, these are also households that often rely on federal benefits, including SNAP and food pantries to make ends meet. Housing and food security are inextricably entwined for low-income folks. If one of those domains is negatively impacted, it will negatively impact the other as well. The fact that you all recognize this and have made a second allocation for both food gathers and the Skip collaboration to feed and house older folks in our community is greatly appreciated and frankly needed. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Barbara Nees May and I'm the CEO of Ypsilanti Meals on Wheels. First, I want to thank you for your continued leadership and compassion for Washtenaw County's older adults. There are days where I feel like our older adults, specifically on the east side, but definitely countywide, just get forgotten. And every time I pick up the phone to call any of you, you're happy to talk to me about the real needs that they're facing and I thank you for that. And tonight I'm speaking in support of our dedicated staff, volunteers, and our partner programs across the county. Each day, Meals on Wheels drivers deliver more than food. We deliver safety, dignity, and connection to hundreds of seniors daily. And it's probably not a surprise, many who live at or below the poverty level. And we have been supporting over thirty percent of our folks who did receive SNAP benefits. So those are the, those are the folks that we're serving. Each meal is a wellness check, a friendly smile, access to many other resources, and often the only human contact our clients have all day. These daily visits prevent isolation, reduce hospitalizations, and allow older adults to remain safely in their homes, something we all value deeply. Our services bring agency and independence for our older adult neighbors. We are grateful that you're considering a first allocation of older adult millage funds. This investment is a stopgap. I need to be... I need to be clear about that. It is a bridge to maintain services and stability while the county builds a long-term, sustainable plan for senior nutrition. I am here tonight to respectfully ask you to approve the resolution before you so that we can continue to provide medically homebound, homebound, older adult meals, companionship, and care. Thank you for recognizing this urgent need and for continuing to stand with older adults and the programs who serve them. Together, we can ensure that no senior in Washtenaw County is left hungry or alone. And since I still have a few seconds left, I definitely want to give a shout out for Mylan, Skip, and Food Gatherers. We need all of these programs to be there for our seniors, and I stand in support of their efforts as well. Thank you all so much.
My name is Chris Brown. I'm the Supportive Services Director for Ypsilanti Meals on Wheels. And I'd like to start by just echoing what Barbara just said. We are part of the same network. It's all, the sort of rising tide lifts all boats. We all work together in collaboration to serve all of the older adult population of Washtenaw County. But I'm here to thank you for your investment in our work. Every year, we conduct a survey of all of our clients to hear from them, what is working, and how we can improve things. And I'd like to use my time to share some of that direct feedback. So I'm going to share some direct quotes from the people that we serve just so that you can hear right from them, because none of them can really be here tonight, because they are all homebound older adults. So I'll start with a quote from Alan. Alan says, "The staff and volunteers are the best. Even my dog Gracie watches for them, and I know that she is grateful for the pet food they bring." Larita says, "The volunteers are wonderful. I look forward to seeing and talking to them every week." Dorothy says, "There could not be a greater group of people. Everyone has been so caring, polite, friendly, and they listen to you. It feels like you matter to them." Hamud says, "I love them. They are so friendly, and they are doing a hard job." Penny says, "I was pleased and surprised at the other services available. One, connecting with the library for home-delivered books. And two, occupational therapy to make my house safer and smarter." Deborah says, "The route drivers noticed my stairs were unsafe and put a referral in, and I received help from the Safe at Home program. I'm so thankful for the follow-up repair that made my steps more solid, secure, and safe." And then lastly, Pamela says, "I wouldn't be able to stay in my own home without Meals on Wheels." Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Anna Pecrell, and I'm the Executive Director of Dexter Senior Center. And like many senior centers in Washtenaw County, our center is also a Meals on Wheels and Congregate Meal Program site. And at our center in the past few weeks, we have seen a significant increase in signups for, specifically at our site, the Congregate Meal Program, which I believe shows that there's a need that's growing, and I think that it will continue to grow as we see how things play out at the federal level. I saw in the last few weeks as well how quickly and collaboratively the Meals on Wheels and Senior Nutrition Programs in the county came together to find solutions. And I hope that our Board of Commissioners will do the same. Thank you for supporting older adults and for considering the Stopgap Funding Resolution for Senior Meals beginning in 2025 or earlier, if you guys can make that happen. But thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Chrissy Taylor, and I am the Senior Director of Community Assistance at Jewish Family Services. I oversee all of our nutrition programming, which includes our specialty food pantry, Meals on Wheels, Wise Center at the J, and Medically Tailored Meal Program. It's also a lot of fun to be here tonight and see all these people that we work so collaboratively with over the last many years that I've been doing this work. So it's great to see everybody in the same room. I wanted to start off by thanking the Board of Commissioners for your continued support of older adults in our community, especially during this time of much uncertainty. For many of our clients we serve, the meals are just the beginning. We do wellness checks and intervene to connect them to services as needed or provide social interactions for a population that's known to be isolated. At the same time, the cost of doing business is rising, volunteers are harder to find, and clients are having more complex circumstances, all while the federal funding feels like it's constantly under threat. This is leaving many of us uncertain how to make sure we can best serve our community. I ask that you support the resolution before you to help support home-delivered and senior congregant meals through the first quarter of 2026 with the hopes of creating a more consistent framework in the future. This is a much-needed lifeline that also shows the partnerships we have across many agencies and areas. I was also happy to see additional resolutions to support the Mylan Senior Center, who I know does great work in their community, our amazing partners at Food Gatherers, and the Skip Program that has helped many of our clients. I know this is just the beginning of conversations about food insecurity among our seniors, and I'm very appreciative to have a Board of Commissioners who sees the need among our most vulnerable. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Jeremy Haley, Ypsilanti Township. First, I'd say they do exist. If people tell you otherwise, they really do exist. If you listen to the news, watch the news, they tell you they don't, but they do exist. I was at the No Kings protest, where I got to hear Commissioner Robbie speak and stuff, and got to see things going on. There was a group of people there that was handing, at a booth, and stuff like this stuff. Become an anti-Christ or forever hold your peace. And if you go into it, there's one line, take out the last three, is crime is not the violation of the rules, but the stigma attached to those. You break the rules without the power to make them. Okay? This is the same group I watched when, you know, the march started. About a dozen or so with backpacks, dressed in black, face masks, black hats, beanies, stuff like that. Some people call them Antifa. So they do exist, and here's what they did. They, as they proceeded, they all stopped reaching each other's backpack. They grabbed the green coverings that the people who were supposed to organize the protest do them. Couple of them put them on. And I've got a picture of them leading this, holding No Kings, no whatever sign, big blue sign in the road. And what these, I saw these people do, they went down to Michigan Ave to where the stop sign, where the crossing signal was, and kept continuously hitting the signal. And eventually, I didn't see it, but eventually they got the people, stopped the traffic, and about three, four hundred or more joined them at that point, blocking the traffic going up Michigan Ave West and onto Huron, where then a fire truck tried to proceed to go down Huron, which they had to weave and bob to get through all the traffic that was backed up from the hijacked march that this group of people that was handing out stuff like this hijacked it and took a peaceful protest. And two, one that was obstructing traffic and turned to something that it shouldn't have been. So I'm sitting here, it does exist. If you listen to Andy Ngo, I mean, that's how I spotted it. I've listened to Andy Ngo, and it's like, holy crap, those people look just like that guy describing and doing exactly what that guy's describing they're doing. That's how I was able to tell. And they obstructed traffic and broke laws. Thank you.
Anyone else in the room for public comment? I'm gonna assume, Ashley, that you might have some public comment online.
Yes, Chair, we have Madden Litten.
Hi, everyone. I'm Madden. Am I good?
Yeah, you're good. Go. Thanks.
I live in Ypsilanti Township. I'm on the Commission on Aging, and I'm also a social worker who works at Housing Bureau for seniors, so we're all here today. So thank you so much for your original Skip and food allocation for our older adults. And relieved to see how responsive and committed this board and staff has been on making a new one. So today, I'd just like to share a quick story that Skip made all the difference, a client story. So we'll talk about my eighty-three-year-old, single woman client who is in unaffordable market rate living, right? Which is basically in Ypsilanti, the same amount of social security you get. So she could not afford to live there. All of her social security was going to rent. She hadn't gone to the grocery store in months. You know, she had been living off food pantries strictly like canned foods. So we were able to get her into senior subsidized housing, whoop, whoop, which means that she only pays thirty percent of her income, so it's seventy percent less than what she was paying. We got her on some food stamps, and where she's moving also has a food pantry. So she is in a much better spot, and really, it wasn't even a whole lot of money. You know, it's less than two thousand dollars, and it makes all the difference. So we appreciate just your continued effort, and it definitely is making an impact directly. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Ashley, anyone else online?
There's no one else online, Chair.
Okay. Commissioner, follow-up happens at this time. Commissioner Somerville?
Thanks. I'm gonna start responding by responding to the comment we got during working session, so I don't forget this time. I know Connie spoke earlier and was asking questions about the regular annual RFP process that will happen with older adult services funding versus some of what we're doing tonight. And so just for clarity for like the public, a lot of what's happening tonight is emergency allocations, with the exception of going back and kind of cleaning up some of the kind of, I guess, the goal for our annual funding for senior centers was, when we adopted the framework, was to support the senior centers that have a municipal-community connection. And so the reason why Mylan got left off that list originally is because the actual senior center itself is located on the other side of Washtenaw County's line in Monroe County. Commissioner Beaman and county staff were able to work with the Mylan Senior Center to determine what percentage of actual Washtenaw County residents use the center, and they're basing the ongoing funding on a formula that takes into consideration how many, like what percentage of users are from Washtenaw County. And so I just wanted to highlight that. All of the senior centers that are listed in the annual allocation list have a connection to the local municipal government. And as we've said over the summertime when we're having these conversations, any organization in the community will be able to apply for support for the work that they're doing during the regular RFP process, which will happen in January, as we've all been told. So I'm just reiterating that. And then just to follow up with some of the comments that we got, really excited that we have items on the agenda to get money out to Meals on Wheels, to replenish the Skip funding, to expand capacity for meal cafes, and to support Mylan. It's super needed. It's a first step. It's a reaction to the current crisis. Really excited about the partnerships that will continue to grow by working through the millage. So thanks for being here and spending your time with us.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hodge?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, everybody that came to give public comment and for our friends online. I'll just try to go in the order of my notes here. CAB, thank you for coming and sharing the letter with us. When we voted on that at the last meeting, you know, I expressed some hesitation about should I vote yes on this letter that is thanking me? It's about CAB being here, but I voted yes anyway. So I'm thankful for you all to come and share that. It's really a team effort. And to all of the senior service advocates in the audience, thank you very much, particularly for your advocacy, ongoing advocacy, how well you stay organized, how you engage us. It's been very collaborative. I think you set a great example for what the collaboration between public and then the electeds and government can look like to try to get good things done. So thank you for that, and please continue to do it. What else? What else? Jeremy's comments about public safety. I think you should talk to the supervisor of Ypsilanti Township about some of your public safety-related concerns. I think she has had conversations with some of the elected officials that you in previous meetings have come to talk to us about. So I would direct you to direct your comments there. I think you may be able to get some more interesting feedback. And let's see, we, oh, there was one other thing. Oh, we did receive some online public comments. I want to recognize those. Thank you to the people that also wrote to us about advocating for the resolutions on the agenda related to senior services. There was one other one. I'm not a fan of this public comment, but I wanted to recognize it anyway. There's somebody, Anna Tubbs in the city of Ann Arbor, says she hates all of us. Not really sure why, but I would love to know more and what we could do differently. But thank you to everybody that shared written public comment, as well as public comment in the room and online. Sorry, let me specify. It says, "I hate all of you guys," so it may not include everybody up here. But thank you, Chair.
Thank you. When you said that you liked all the public comment, I was gonna remind you of that. Commissioner Beaman?
Thank you, Chair. I want to start by thanking our 4-H team that I think went home, because it's a school night, that thank you for coming and leading us in the pledge and representing a very rural area and having a spouse that was in 4-H. It's very near and dear to my heart, so I just want to thank them again for being here. Thank you to everyone who's here to advocate on behalf of our seniors from the Mylan Senior Center to Meals on Wheels. We're trying to do what we can to shore up services to protect our vulnerable inner community. Yes, just a thank you to everyone. I loved the quote, "It feels like you matter to them," because you do. They do. And I know that our seniors sometimes feel very invisible, especially when they're homebound. So just thank you for the work that you do in coming here to advocate for that. So yeah, excited and excited to have Mylan on the agenda for tonight.
Thank you. Any other Commissioners, as a response to public comment? Commissioner Light?
I just want to say thank you to all that came out and gave public comment, and just want to just give a shout out to all those that support our seniors. I appreciate all that you do for our seniors, because without you, then they wouldn't have the support. So I support you all one hundred percent and will continue to advocate and to have your back. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Light. Any other Commissioners?
Okay, I will tell you that I'm really happy that we're getting some money out to help with some of the SNAP things. There have been a lot of indignities that this current government has perpetrated on residents of this country and this county in particular for this discussion here. And we've seen them. This has been something that has really, it's been keeping me awake at night. And I think that it's the idea that the benefits were probably never enough to begin with, and now there's even lots of those benefits out there. And the way that we create family and community over tables. And so I'm gonna be very dorky if you could just stick with me for a moment. There's a poem that makes me think about this. Perhaps "The World Ends Here" by Joy Harjo. "The world begins at a kitchen table. No matter what, we must eat to live. The gifts of earth are bought and prepared, set on the table. So it has been since creation, and it will go on. We chase chicken and dogs away from it. Babies teethe at the corners. They scrape their knees under it. It is here children are given instructions on what it means to be human. We make men at it, we make women. At this table, we gossip, recall enemies, and ghosts of lovers. Our dreams drink coffee with us. As they put their arms around our children, they laugh with us at our poor, falling-down selves as we put ourselves back together once again at the table." This table has been a house in the rain, an umbrella in the sun. Wars have begun and ended at this table. It is a place to hide in the shadow of terror, a place to celebrate the terrible victory. We have given birth on this table and we have prepared our parents for burial here. At this table, we sing with joy, with sorrow. We pray of suffering and remorse. We give thanks. Perhaps the world will end at the kitchen table while we are laughing and crying, eating of the last sweet bite." It's the table, the symbolism for all of us and how those meals bring us together. And I hope we can do everything here at the table to make sure that keeps happening for people in the county.
Okay, that's the end of that. Item four crossed off. Thanks for Poetry Corner at the Board of Commissioners tonight. Um, next item on the agenda is liaison reports. I think Justin, Commissioner Justin Hodge would like to start there.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, at a previous meeting, you had expressed some interest in us submitting written liaison reports. So I will do you that one and I will submit a written liaison report to the board and administration in lieu of me making the normal comments I would make at this point.
Fantastic. I love that. Um, I'm glad that you're gonna do that. I was just also gonna encourage everybody that some of our liaison reports have gone a little far afield. So I, I love that we have liaison reports. Let's keep them to liaison reports. Any other liaison reports at this meeting? Oh, wow. Okay, all right. Um, I am gonna move us through items six and seven and then we'll move into closed session. But I just wanted to make sure why there were people here and engaged. We got the report from the county administrator and the report from the chair of the Board of Commissioners. So take it away, Greg Dill.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, everyone. Uh, I, I would ask Catherine Jones, author, to make her way up for the Q3 uh update. And while she's making her way up, I just wanna give you a couple of quick updates. I know we talked earlier about the older adults uh and, and getting those resources out as quickly as we can. Uh, one, the other component to that is the hiring of the Director of Aging. That process is in the queue and I expect to have a formal announcement at the November nineteenth meeting. So stay tuned for that. Secondly, pleased to report that we are making significant progress around the Eastside Rec Center. Uh, the Architectural and Engineering Services Award has happened. Uh, we have awarded it to a firm uh by the name of Newman Smith. And this comes after we have done an extensive evaluation. There have been interviews and reference checks. So really pleased to report that we're moving through the design development phase in the right way. Consistent with that, we are in the process of hiring a construction manager. The RFP is, is in process. The bids were advertised on the nineteenth. We've had a pre-bid meeting and those responses are expected on November thirteenth. So again, uh, I just wanna say thank you to the board for making this a priority. Thank you to our community partners on the east side for uh their patience with us, but it looks like we're making substantial progress, progress. So I just wanna say thank you to everyone. Catherine, if you wanna take it away, we have a short report on uh Q3. We are moving through that process and getting closer and closer to our projections. So I think that speaks volumes to the process that we have in place at this organization.
Thank you. There we go. Okay, good. Yep, so it's Q3 budget update time. So we're gonna be talking about actuals through nine thirty, twenty-five. Um, when we look at the general fund, we started on the year with a budget of a hundred and fifty-seven point six million, grew to a hundred and sixty point seven million. Um, that reflects the Q1 technical budget adjustments, um primarily for property taxes. Um, general fund, projected general fund revenues are a hundred and sixty point five million. Um, and projected general fund expenditures are a hundred and fifty-seven point five million. So revenues exceed expenditures um for a net projected surplus of three point five million dollars. Um, fun reminder, we have a planned budgeted surplus of two point six million. So really, we're talking about a surplus of eight hundred and forty-six thousand. Um, our projected fund balance will be sixty-eight point one million, which is uh forty-two percent of the current twenty-twenty-five budget. And our current policies require the fund balance and the general fund to be above twenty-nine percent. Um, also a reminder, in the quadrennial budget that is before you, there are some um recommended uses of fund balance in that budget too. Um, for projections comparisons, this felt really nice. Um, we went from a planned surplus of three point three million to a planned surplus of three point four million, so about a hundred thousand dollar swing. I don't have to do a bunch of wild variance explanations for you all, cuz things are pretty similar to Q2. So. Um, for our general fund expenditure, so a hundred and fifty-seven point two million. Again, I feel like every time we're looking at this, we know Public Safety and Justice is the largest service area group. Um, contract policing is broken out, um projected to cost nineteen point three million. I'm going down from there. Health and Human Services is our, um, is largely appropriations to non-general fund programming. Um, and then we have the cap credit at the end um that offsets some of our administrative costs. Here is the look by department, which I know we prefer um harder to talk through, but you can see all of the individual um departments that make up those service area groups. Again, this is largely similar to the Q2 budget update. Um, so for variances, this does look different. Um, I promised you all more detail, especially around the Sheriff's Office. So there's a lot of lines on here around the Sheriff's Office. Um, so we're gonna work our way through all of this. We have a three point four, sorry, a million-dollar projected surplus of expenditures. Um, the largest surplus is that planned contribution to fund balance. Um, I'll walk through the uses of that. Again, those haven't changed, so um it's the same as Q2. Um, our general fund personal services outside of the courts and sheriff's office is projecting a surplus of one point eight million dollars. Um, that includes budgeted attrition for these departments where applicable. Um, Q1 technical adjustments included allocating one point eight million to the undesignated um allocation, which is available to address any of the projected budget shortfalls. In the Q3 technical adjustments that is before you later tonight, we are recommending that we intentionally put that to fund balance to have flexible funding to respond to any kind of funding crisis that may come from whatever um place. So that, right now, it's projected um to basically fall to fund balance. It would look the same if that um item is adopted in the way it's presented, presented right now. Um, in the Sheriff's Office, there is a net surplus of seven hundred thousand in current year millage funds. Um, that's basically going to cover other operational shortfalls within the Sheriff's Office. So um it's staying in the general fund, but it's a source of um covering some of those operational gaps that are out there. Um, Sheriff Fleet is projecting a surplus of five hundred and seventy-six thousand based on year-to-date trends. Um, that's also helping offset some of the other expenditure shortfalls. Then all other sheriff operations, so there's some shortfalls below. All of the rest hits about three hundred and fifty thousand dollar surplus. So there's a lot of factors happening in that sheriff budget. And then District Court has a surplus of about two hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and twenty thousand. That's primarily personal um services, or sorry, primarily vacancy savings. On shortfalls, starting back at the bottom, um so Sheriff Personal Services is projecting a two point one million dollar shortfall. That does include the budgeted attrition um and overtime costs that are offsetting um some of the savings from vacancies. Um, but not all overtime is driven by vacancies. So there's leaves, there's over, um, hospital guard posts, court requirements for transport, a bunch of different factors um that play into that overtime picture for them. Um, the next largest shortfall is one we talked about, is the one point seven million dollars for jail food and medical based on current contract rates um and the jail population. Um, and then the RFP is underway for, make sure this is right, medical costs. Um, which expire at the end of the year. I think food is planned for next year. Um, but we're not, just because of that for RFP, we don't know for sure that there will be savings. We don't anticipate there will be savings. Let me say that differently. Um, the animal control contract um is projected to be four hundred and ninety-three thousand over budget. That's um based on the current contract amount. Um, and that's just cuz we never adjusted the budget for that contract. Um, at county admin is projected to be four hundred and fifty-three thousand over budget. That's due to the continued board-directed sponsorships above the admin operating budget, though it's largely offset by vacancy savings that are included above in the general fund personal services. Um, Sheriff Court Securities projecting a three hundred and sixty-two thousand dollar shortfall. That is part-time temp costs due to the current staffing levels and current wages of those staff. Um, banking fees, again, similar to last one, is about three hundred thousand over budget. Um, these are the fees the county pays to accept credit cards, um and then as well as manage investments. Water Resources projecting about a hundred and eighty-five thousand. That's due to um over budget. That's due to increased contractor use, partially offset by their revenue surplus. And that is included in the budgeted, the Q3 technical adjustments later tonight. And then the uh last piece of the sheriff is the Sheriff Metro SWAT vehicle is currently a source of a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollar shortfall. It is part of the Q3 technical adjustments. This is a metro SWAT vehicle that's bought by lots of jurisdictions in the general fund, is the portions that the other jurisdictions paid for weirdly. County's portions are in other funds. Again, that's all in the Q3 technical adjustments. Um, but overall, cuz you can't really easily see how the whole sheriff shakes out in this. Um, between the sources of surpluses and shortfalls, the W, the Sheriff's Office is projecting an expenditure shortfall of two point nine million dollars. There are budget adjustments before you tonight um that would address that budget. I'm gonna walk you through all these. These are exact same slide you saw last time. Um, all of our uses of, that we reduced our contribution to fund balance. These are all items that have been adopted by previous board action for budget adjustments. Um, talking about attrition, uh, our budget attrition's three point six million. Our projected attrition right now is three point nine million. So vacancy savings are about three hundred and six thousand above that budget, so about a hundred and two percent. Um, this chart shows total values by um service area, but this is the one I think was a little more helpful last time around. This is, the green bars are taking the percent of the attrition credit compared to the personal services budget for those departments. The blue line is the projected amount. So when the blue line is bigger than the green line, it means we're achieving more attrition than we had projected. When it's shorter, we're achieving less. For revenues, um, this is also very similar. So general operating millage, a hundred and three million dollars. Public safety and justice, so that's courts of the sheriff's office outside of contract policing is about as close to nineteen million. Other general government, eighteen point one million. This is primarily state funding from revenue sharing, marijuana, state liquor tax. Um, personal property tax reimbursement are the biggest sources of those, as well as interest earnings. Uh, we have a very small projected revenue shortfall of twenty-nine thousand dollars, thirty thousand dollars. Um, in this, the general fund interest earnings are the largest source of revenue surplus, projecting about one point eight million dollars. Um, this was adjusted, I keep them pretty conservative, so when the Fed adjusts rates, we're not having to adjust that down. I just let the actuals kind of roll in at this point. Um, other sheriff revenue outside of contract leasing is projecting a one million, one point one million dollar surplus. Included in that is the hundred and seventy-one million dollars for that metro SWAT vehicle of the other jurisdictions paying um into the general fund to cover that. The clerk's office is projecting a surplus of two hundred and seven thousand based on year-to-date collections. Um, that is one we're watching because last year it was lower. We're hoping this is a good trend, but it's hard to know with the volatility that's out there. And then water resources is projecting a hundred and fifteen thousand dollar revenue surplus. This is a pretty conservative estimate. We expect it to be um higher, but we wanted to present the most conservative picture at this point in time in the update. Uh, trial court is projecting a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars of revenue shortfall. Um, that's not offset by an expenditure surplus. Um, they're projected to be right on budget. Um, personal property taxes um is about a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollar surplus, or sorry, shortfall. Um, this is primarily because in that twenty-five through twenty-eight budget, I had miscalculated what the state letter was going to say. So that's corrected in the quadrennial budget. And then contract policing has a um three million dollar shortfall. Again, that's similar to what we've been seeing, um and has to do with the unfilled positions, so we don't charge revenue for those. We don't charge the local units for those unfilled positions. So they're budgeted, but not charged. Okay. Um, non-general funds, it's um really good news. We have, most of our non-general funds that we monitor especially closely are in either surplus or in neutral status. Um, health and CMH both through nine thirty, twenty-five um are projected to have a surplus um at this point in time. Um, a lot of our grant programs are coming in neutral. OCD um has, hold on, make sure, we have, they're still monitoring the impacts of the federal budget discussions. Shutdowns can impact things, um but at the moment, projecting neither surplus or deficit. Um, we will update you as things develop. Um, so there's only one fund, this looks giant cuz it's, but there's one fund that has a shortfall. Senior Nutrition has about a two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollar shortfall. Um, the funding solution for that is to be determined. We have to come up with a, a recommendation before the end of the year for that one. And then Q3 budget adjustments, none, so we're gonna talk about that. No admin authority ones. We've just been doing the ones that you all um have authorized. And then next steps looks pretty similar, so we keep monitoring those revenues. I should have added on here, well, we've federal changes, but the shutdown can make different impacts as we continue to watch that develop. Watching inflation on our operational budgets and then how that personal cost growth will impact things. Um, this is a new presentation of the Health Department. Um, projected changes, these numbers are pretty similar, but just a different way of kind of seeing how the different years will flow. Um, from what we know at the moment on from federal revenue impacts. Um, OCDs, um, I had conflated a couple of terms last time. So these are corrected and validated by LS a couple of times, cuz I wanted to make sure we had them in there accurately. Um, so we don't have any specific cuts or ending of grant programs as of this time. Again, continuing to monitor that. Uh, and CMH and resiliency all look the same um for what we know at the moment. And then you'll have one more budget update from me, uh, March or April. We're gonna be talking quadrennial budget later tonight, so that's really it. Care for questions?
Colleagues, any questions? Is that a hand, Caroline? No, okay. No questions for you on this.
Oh, not like, it's not a whole night thing, no questions?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Um, that's the main thing. I'll say thank you. It's, it's a lot of work.
Uh, anything else for your report?
Thank you, Chair. That will conclude my report.
Okay, thank you. Um, report from the Chair of the Board of Commissioners. I don't have a lot to say to you. Um, I wanted to answer Commissioner Sanders' question from earlier this evening. Federal workers uh make up one point four of the national workforce and one point six of the workforce of Washtenaw County, which is approximately four thousand five hundred jobs of the Washtenaw County workforce. Um, they are doing things like serving in the EPA National Vehicle and Fuel Emissions Laboratory, the U.S. Geological Survey Great Lakes Science Center, the National Oceanic Atmospheric Administration, Great Lakes Environmental Research Laboratory, the Social Security Administration, the FBI, the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms Explosives, the Mylan Federal Correctional Facility. Thank you, Commissioner Beeman, for bringing that to our attention too. The U.S. District Court for the Eastern District Court of Michigan, the U.S. Postal Service. I didn't even think about that. And the VA of Ann Arbor Healthcare System and the Lieutenant Colonel Charles S. Kettles VA Medical Center. So that's a lot of people. You, I can send it. It was actually, I, it makes me sound smart that I'm saying that. Um, but it was actually in a resolution we had in February of this year. But I screenshotted that particular part and I'd be happy to send it to you. One, uh, it's about four thousand five hundred jobs of the Washtenaw County workforce, our federal jobs. It's a lot of people not getting paid in our county right now. Uh, I feel like I'm gonna talk to my mail delivery person tomorrow and find out what they need. Anyway, um, the other only brief thing I wanted to report that I have permission to report is that Commissioner Robbie is now a proud papa. Proud papa. Um, everybody is healthy. Proud Papa, everybody is healthy and safe and resting, I think, for one more night in the hospital. And then they'll figure out what it means to come home. Okay, that concludes my report. At this time, we do have a sort of meaty closed session, which if you're here means that somebody will move us into closed session, somebody will second it, and we all disappear and go downstairs to the administrative room for as long as it takes. And then we'll, and then we'll be back. Would anybody like to move us into closed session, Commissioner Hodge?
I move that we move into a meaty closed session.
Support.
I know, there's a specific thing, there's a specific thing she needs to give me to say, but I don't already, you just want me to say that right there? I move that we move into a closed session to discuss Fox v. Washtenaw Negotiation Strategy for Union Negotiations and receive an opinion from Corporation Council.
Support.
A meaty closed session.
Roll call, okay, roll call, roll call, please, thank you.
Commissioner Beeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge.
Yes.
Commissioner Labar.
Yes.
Commissioner Light.
Yes.
Commissioner Machewski. Commissioner Sanders.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Somerville.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, see you when we see ya.
Okay. Hello, everyone. We're back. The next, thank you, thank you for still being here. Um, I said the next time we go into closed session, I would like us to invest in some of these little like buzzer things that you get when you are on a waitlist at a restaurant. And we can give them to people who want to stay, then you could go across the street and have some dinner and we just buzz you when we were coming back. So, um, I'll, I'll look for those, maybe at some like property disco things, see what we can do. Um, all right, the next item on the agenda is the special order of business. Um, so I need somebody to move the special order of business.
So moved, support.
Okay, so, uh, one is a resolution to set a public hearing on the 2026, 2029 quadrennial budget. Any discussion on this? Okay. We're gonna do a roll call vote on one. So let's do two, let's do two bolts, two words with one sound, two words with one roll call. The resolution to set a public hearing on the Brownfield plan for seven sixteen Sanborn Road, Manchester. Any discussion, questions, comments, considerations, Commissioner Beeman?
Just want to thank the board for their consideration.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay, now we'll do a roll call on both those items. Thank you.
Commissioner Hodge.
Yep.
Commissioner Labar.
Yes.
Commissioner Light.
Yes.
Commissioner Machewski.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott.
Sure.
Commissioner Somerville.
Yes.
Commissioner Beeman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Fantastic. Uh, next item on the agenda is appointments. This is a resolution appointing a member to the Board of Public Works. Somebody want to second it?
Second.
Wow. What is happening? Okay. Um, and this is also a roll call. So Brendan.
Commissioner Labar.
Yes.
Commissioner Light.
Yes.
Commissioner Machewski.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott.
Yep.
Commissioner Somerville.
Yes.
Commissioner Beeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, consent agenda, would anybody like to move the?
Move the consent agenda.
Support. Any discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? All right, great resolutions, first reading. Would anybody like to move the first reading items, Commissioner Labar?
Your chair, under resolutions, first reading, A, a resolution approving the 2026 budget of the Washington County Convention Visitors Bureau. B, a resolution authorizing the signature of the chair on a ten-year management agreement with the Washington County Convention Visitors Bureau. C, a resolution amending the older adults millage framework, adding Mylan seniors for healthy living to the list of qualified senior centers. D, a resolution approving the twenty-five third quarter general fund and non-general fund budget adjustment. Uh, E, a resolution to adopt the 2026, 2029 quadrennial budget. And F, a resolution to approve contract five, seven, three, two, one with Wayne State University. Support. I'm sorry, Chair, did, did she say B or E?
B.
Could I pull E for separate consideration? E as in Edward.
Any others separately pulled, I thought my mind was not on.
Thank you. Uh, any other separately pulled items? Okay, uh, any discussion on any of the items not B or E, Commissioner Hodge?
Thank you, Chair, just wanted to say, I'm about to see really quickly. I, I'm excited to vote yes on C. Uh, looking at the data, it's, it's great that that senior center is supporting so many Washington County residents. Uh, I want to thank staff and particularly Ashley for her leadership on getting that particular piece of it worked out. I happened to be at the office at the time when she and others were working on it, so you get to see the magic happen sometimes and it got done. Uh, thank you to Brady too for taking a trip down to Mylan and for everybody else that worked on it, but, but nice job getting the, I'm pointing at Ashley, nice job getting the, all that, the, the heavy lifting of that part done. So, and thank you to Mylan for your patience, looking forward to getting some money out of your way. That is all.
Commissioner Labar?
Thanks, Chair. Uh, I'll be voting in support, appreciate all the work that went in. Just want to highlight on item B and on the CVB generally, uh, I think they do excellent work, appreciate the contract we've highlighted, uh, that we, that we've modified here. Um, in the video earlier tonight, that, that dichotomy of a very prosperous Washington County and questions of affordability. Um, I just want to lift that up because I think we still have some progress to make there, uh, and am hopeful we can do so, but very pleased to vote for it tonight. Thanks.
Commissioner Beeman?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, also want to thank Ashley and Brady and everyone who put all of their work into, um, this piece for Mylan, very excited to move this forward and appreciate the support of my fellow commissioners.
Anybody else on anything not B or E? Um, I just have something to say about an item that's not B or E that is on D. This is our third quarter general fund and non-general fund, non-structural budget, uh, allocations. Um, I just want to note that we are authorizing $2.7 million in budget adjustments, um, for the, for the administrator to adjust the sheriff's department budget. We have never had a $2.7 million budget adjustment in a third quarter for the sheriff's department yet. I'm not going to vote no, I'm going to vote yes, but this is, this is new to us. And this is something I will be bringing up again when we talk about the quadrennial budget. Um, this is a problem. Okay. Thank you. Uh, let's vote on all those items and then we'll go back to B and E. Uh, it's a first reading, so we can do a roll call. All those in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Okay, those items pass. We'll move on to B. B. Questions, comments, and concerns on B? Commissioner Sanders? Is that what, is, is that right?
Um. Yeah, so, excuse me.
Need more ginger?
I have a concern, but I'm wondering if I might. Maybe I can bring it in another forum. I, I don't have a concern about the contract per se.
Okay.
Um, I just want to make sure that, um, the Bureau is not, um, possibly in a place where they don't have any options. They're able to space. So.
Oh.
I can bring that in another venue, but it is, it's not related to the contract itself.
Okay.
I just don't want to, I don't want them language-wise to be locked in. Um, and more importantly, I don't want them taken advantage of, being taken advantage of, because options can be slim pickings. So.
You want them to have flexibility?
Yes, I do.
Okay. I appreciate that. Commissioner Hodge and then, uh, Labar?
Thank you, Chair, I just want to respond to that really quickly because it might make you not concerned. The, in the contract, there's language that they would maintain an office space in the Ypsilanti area, and that's something that they are excited to do, uh, and something that they want as part of it. Uh, there isn't language saying that they have to be at a specific place in the Ypsilanti area, but that they will be in the Ypsilanti area.
Let me go, can I go to Labar and then back to you? Okay.
Thanks, Chair. Um, just for clarification, the, in, in the version before us, is, is the requirement for the two elected officials on the CVB Board of Directors or on the Executive Committee?
It is on the Board of Directors.
Wonderful.
And it was related to, like, questions on quorum for executive committee. This made it easier for them to meet the way they could. If somebody is elected who's on the board would like to be part of the executive committee, they have that option, it's just not required.
Um, th- that was, I think, a linguistic change that I really appreciate, thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, sure. Commissioner Sanders?
So I said I wasn't going to talk about it, but then Justin opened his mouth and just, Commissioner, Commissioner Hodge. Uh, so my concern, uh, was, um, that I didn't want the Bureau to be in a situation that could be akin to like Michigan Works. Where they
had
certain guidelines that they had to follow and it was time to look for a new space. And there was no space that could meet those requirements in, uh, the city of Ypsilanti. So this was not, this is not intended to be in a front to, uh, Commissioner Somerville or Commissioner Hodge related to trying to keep them in Ypsilanti. My concern was more about, um, some of the landlords that have a stranglehold on the properties. And wanting them to be able to have options, because there are already people, you know, feeding at the trough. Thinking that they're going to be able to continue their one-upmanship. So, read, read through that what you may.
Okay. Any other comments or questions or concerns on B? Okay, we'll do a voice vote on B. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item passes to the second reading, next item on the agenda, E, E, this is the 2026, 2029 quadrennial budget questions, comments, concerns. Commissioner Labar?
Um, Chair, this is not the final vote on this, obviously, and so I, I will vote to advance it tonight. Um, I would like to suggest that we, uh, look at the idea of setting aside some contingency within this budget. I'll put some pen to paper on something that would be to respond to, you know, unfortunate the world as it is and unforeseen events. Uh, that won't be requisite for my support for the budget, but I do think it's, uh, perhaps just a useful budget tool. Um, I think this is by and large a holdover budget. I think that's prudent, um, but it does make some structural investments in the ease of operation in the organization that I think we can also balance, uh, you know, with, with, with other priorities as well. So I'll be voting yes tonight, uh, and happy to chat more, appreciate the, uh, the opportunity for input.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other comments or questions or concerns? Okay. Um, I, I was, I have a lot of questions and comments and concerns. I feel like some of them I'm going to save, some of my requests I'm going to, um, make in emails. I just commented on being concerned about authorizing $2.7 million in budget adjustments for the sheriff's office. If you look at this budget, there's a significant increase in the amount of money that goes to the sheriff's office. I am interested in knowing more about how those, the ordinance, the plan for using the ordinance language, I don't understand how we're, how that's being realized here. That's going to be important for me. And additionally, I, I would like to see some attempts, some further attempts to think about how we're breaking down a significant budget increase. Catherine, while you're standing there, can you tell me what the full number of increases? Because I know we've talked about the food and medical increase, but it's my understanding there's an attrition increase as well. So it's not really 2.6 more million dollars, it's closer to four, is that correct? Or no, am I making that up? What's the full increase to the sheriff's department budget this year from last year?
Um, outside of wages and fleet that we have always done and capped, so that's kind of separate, that's not, those are internal calculations, not based on their operations. Um, so there's 1.7 million dollars, um, for the, I think on average, for the jail food and medical. Um, I can double check that, as I said, that number, it's around there. Um, and then, um, the attrition at the moment is the sim, is the continued methodology that we have from this year, pending some conversations around data, et cetera. We just didn't have time to get to an agreement in time for the recommended budget. So at the moment, the only change is those statutory, or not statutory, but those common internal services and then that 1.7-ish for jail food and medical.
Okay. So we don't really know yet then? What's it? What's the, because of the attrition?
In the budget in front of you, it's the same attrition, but it is the attrition, it's the same methodology that has not been able to be realized in the current 2025 budget. With that. I could.
No, I, I'm with you. I'm just wondering what you think that then the real increase in the number might be?
That, I mean, okay, it's, I'm not exactly sure how to respond to that. Um.
I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay.
But you can say, I can't answer it, and I accept that.
Okay.
You, you can get back to me.
Can we do that? Yeah, okay. I think that'll be easier if I can pull all the, the numbers together.
Yeah, I'm not, it's not you. I'm, you know, I understand. You have what you have.
Yes.
And you don't have what you need to have to answer that question for me.
We are in the process of that conversation.
Right. We're, we're in the, just to clarify, we're in the process as this is at our single first reading.
Yes.
And we don't have answers yet. Okay. That's, that's a great answer enough for me. Any other questions, comments, or concerns on item E? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're gonna move on. Uh, no final reading, no single reading. Uh, wait, there are single readings, are there? Yes, sing, sorry, the big, the big one, sorry. Um, who would like to move the single readings, please? Andy, Commissioner Labar? Get informal at 11 o'clock at night.
Sure. A, a resolution allocating older person's millage funds to senior nutrition program providers through March 31st, 2026. B, a resolution allocating $100,000 to the old and per, older person's millage funds to a local food bank and $100,000 of the older person millage funds to the Senior Crisis Intervention Program. Uh, and I'd also move claims. Support.
Okay, uh, anybody want to move anything for a separate vote? Okay, comments, questions, or concerns on, uh, items that we have before us? Commissioner Somerville?
I just wanted to say I'm really appreciative that we have these items before us and I will be voting yes. And I just wanted to highlight, I'm wearing my Ipsy Meals on Wheels button to show support and, um, really grateful for all the work that people in our community do for older adults. Thank you.
Commissioner Macheski?
Thanks, Chair. Uh, I wanted to note again, uh, everybody that came out in public comment tonight.
Mm-hmm.
It shows the strength of the network that exists in Washtenaw County in terms of older adult caregiver services. And appreciate them being here tonight when they are under incredible stress. Um, with the idea that hunger is being used as a political weapon right now.
Disgusting.
Um, and they are the ones who are meeting this every day. Um, the Meals on Meals programs, the food pantries, um, the various nutrition support organizations, our senior centers. So much, much credit goes to them i- in the situations that they're dealing with. And I'm, um, very happy we're gonna be able to, uh, push some of the millage funds to support the very basic service of food for people. Um, when it comes to meals funding, uh, the documents that we had in the packet referenced AgeWaze and the money we get from AgeWaze, which is our area agency on aging. Uh, you need to note that AgeWaze, as the area agency on aging, is really the conduit for federal and state nutrition dollars. Uh, and so while AgeWaze simply passes on what they get.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I recently had the opportunity to look at 12, the last 12 years of funding for nutrition programs for older adults uh, in my day job in the area that I work in and, um, very quick realization, over the last 12 years, there have only been two of those 12 years where there's been any kind of real bump up in terms of funding from the federal and state government on nutrition services for older adults. Two years out of 12. Meanwhile, the demographics of aging have vastly increased with no additional funding. The cost of providing those meals and the inflation that have been experienced in those 12 years have vastly increased the cost of providing those meals, leading to a scenario where we are actually providing fewer meals
Mm-hmm.
now because of the cost and the fact that the revenue is not kept up and that we have a senior miller's now in our county that we can step in in a situation like this and support a very basic human need. We are fortunate on the timing of this, I think. Um, and I guess I will end my comments with, um, I, I'm glad we have this, this, these funds to put out there. And I, I think that this should be a regular part, in my opinion, a regular part of what we do with these millage funds is have something set aside, and I think we wrote this into our policy.
We did.
Um, that we can meet emergency needs and we have some money set aside to, um, meet gaps when they occur. Uh, and we're fortunate we have the opportunity to do that now. For me, I hope that once, um, the administrator announces his decision on who this person is for the Director of Aging here in Washtenaw County, um, one of the first things that they work on is a strategic plan for nutrition services in our county. And working with all the stakeholders that were here tonight, to come up with a way that we can have a sustainable program for nutrition, working with all of these partners and improving on that. Um, because I think this mileage allows us to have potentially the best meals program in the entire country. We have, we have the the funds to do that. Um, so with that, Chair, I'm really excited these items are here and, uh, look forward to supporting them tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Macheski. Commissioner Light?
I just want to say that I am excited to vote yes, um, on assisting, um, our seniors. And I want to also say that I appreciate all of our stakeholders, all those that, um, all the agencies that support, um, our seniors with meals that they collaborated and that they came together for one ask. And so it wasn't like, oh, well, we need and we need. They came together and I can appreciate that. Um, they, they combined their forces so that they can make sure that our seniors are well taken care of and I greatly appreciate that. It's so much easier to work with individuals when they come together and like, okay, this is how we can support everyone. So I just appreciate it. I'm excited about this. I can't wait till we get our new director, um, just so we can continue, um, to make sure we utilize our senior millage dollars um, as they should be.
Thank you, Commissioner Light. Commissioner Hodge?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, really excited that we're doing this before the end of the year. I know there's, uh, we're still waiting for the director to start. Uh, I hope that we're able to continue getting out funds and that the community knows that we really, we do care, even though it's taken us a while to get millage funds pushed up, pushed out. Um, we're gonna keep doing it. I know this is only, it's a stopgap, like Barbara said during public comment earlier, uh, but it's something that the board takes seriously. So I'm grateful for everybody's work on it, on the board, uh, and in the community to make it a reality. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hodge. Any other comments on these items, questions, concerns? Uh, I will say that I am, I, like, I just get teary thinking about it, Commissioner Macheski, when you were talking about the importance of this. I am grateful in this moment to the voters of Washtenaw County for approving this millage and that, thank God, we have it right now to be doing some of this work to try to make sure fewer people than would be going hungry are going hungry or don't have the services. I keep on my bulletin board, I think, I don't know if it was last year or the year before, but we got the paper plates. Remember this? And mine was like a, thank God for Ipsy Meals on Wheels because this person had fallen and said like, without Meals on Wheels coming to my house, I would have died. I mean, like, it's on my, like, so I have a bulletin board. You see it when you come into my house. I see that every day when I come into my house and it reminds me of why I'm doing this work. And that's why I'm extra grateful that we have this, these funds to, to do this work. And I work with these people who want to do this work. So I am also super, um, happy that we have this and very, very appreciative of the advocacy that we had in the room tonight. This is what I want to see county work doing. This is the work. When, when I am get sounding pedantic and hard about things in the budget, it's so we can have, make sure that we have funds to do things like this. The more we can fund food banks and housing programs, the less we need things like public safety. And we have an outsized budget on either end, and I would just like to see that get balanced more. Commissioner Sanders, I inspired you to speak? Go ahead.
Uh, this is not necessarily related, since we're talking about successful millages and this was not ours. We have not mentioned yet that we had a successful WISD millage that will help support our youth, um, in the county. Um, and I just want to make my plug that I appreciate being, living in a county, uh, where for the most part, we take care of our most vulnerable. That would, that includes the seniors and our youth. Um, and hopefully moving forward, we'll be able to, uh, also support, you know, a youth center. That's another plug. Just saying. Um, so, because those, you know, those, those youth are the ones that have to make decisions on our behalf when we are all back in diapers.
Mm-hmm.
Wear diapers twice in your life most of the time. So, um, I'm, I'm appreciative that we have, I think, as, um, Commissioner Macheski said, the ability to have a cutting-edge, um, millage to support our seniors and make sure that they're safe. And my last plug is, I still want that attorney. I want anybody driving into Washtenaw County or, or thinking that they're gonna be here for a minute to have the fear of God and they better not mess with our seniors, because we're gonna handle them. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, or concerns on the single reading items? Okay, we will do a roll call because it's a single reading. Okay.
Commissioner Light?
Yes.
Commissioner Macheski?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yep.
Commissioner Somerville?
Yes.
Commissioner Beaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Labar?
Yes.
Motion's carry.
Great. Did we do approval of claims? We did. Okay, great. Um, and good news, we've done items, uh, we've done one of the items for current and future discussion. Any other items for current and future discussion? Beaman?
I just want to do a quick thank you to, um, Tony Caumee and OCD for responding to, we have a situation in the city of Celine where we're going to be partnering with them. There's going to be a great eviction happening on December 5th. And so we're working out a plan to look at how we can support these people as they're going to be out in one of the coldest.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Somerville? Did I see your hand? I thought I saw your hand.
I was gonna move to adjourn.
Oh. Are you doing that? Are you waiting to see if anybody has anything left to say?
Well, does it count that I already said it or?
That I was going to. You didn't say, I am.
I moved to adjourn.
Okay, is there a support? All those in favor? All right, see you in two weeks.